It's time to start.
When you get ready.
Calling to order the Parowan City Council meeting, it is six oh one PM on October twenty sixth. Thank you so much for being here tonight, it's nice to see the room full and all of these wonderful people here. I do want to recognize we do have Rex Ship here. He is our Republican member of the Utah House of Representatives representing District seventy one. I wanted to be sure I got that right, which is Parowan. Okay, thank you for being here. We are going to open this meeting with a prayer from Jolie Sudwicks and then be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Rochelle Topham.
Dear me Father, we're very grateful for the opportunity that all of us get to have to be here today. We're very grateful for this beautiful town that we live in and grateful for the community and what brings us all together. Please bless us that we can have a good meeting and that the Spirit can be here with us and that we can all be unified in our love of Parowan. And I say things in thy Son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Can you all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I would also like to excuse Councilmember David Burton. He may be joining us a little bit later, but for now I would like to excuse him. We will now move into Declaration of Conflicts with personal interest or personal interest on any of the agenda items by the City Council.
No mayor.
No.
No mayor.
Yes.
I have a personal interest in Agenda Item Number Nine that I need to declare. I'm a veteran.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We may move some items around on tonight's agenda. We have one of the items that the person may not be here till a little bit later and that is the disposition of real estate South Central Communications. So just be aware of that, we're going to be watching out for it. And then we also weren't sure if we should move up the jail bond piece because of how many people are here specifically for that agenda item. What are the Council...
So we don't have Commissioner Blake here yet, but I've heard he's in town, but it's from a work meeting to an action meeting, but that's the only reason we were thinking about it.
Anyway, I'm up for approval on it as it stands, or I'm up for approval if you would like to adjust a few items.
We can have a work meeting and then go to action meeting and then go back to work meeting, can't we?
I think so.
So we could, if he shows up, do you want to move it to right after the consent agenda? And have the jail presentation and then go into action and then...
Are you texting him, Matty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, that would be great. So I don't know, we can make a motion on that adjustment as well as the item with South Central. But I think if we end up bringing the bail one up, that would give the time for the South Central person to get here, so that might work out even better.
That's a good idea.
Mayor, I move that we amend the agenda by moving Item Number Fifteen to between seven and eight in the consent meeting.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We're now moving into public comment, this time has been set aside for the public to express their ideas, concerns, and comments. Can I just start out?
Yeah, and I actually wanted to make a public comment too.
Well, you can do it after me then. I have invited the Parowans soccer team to come and talk about, just like show their trophy, present, and just talk about what they did in region. They actually just on this Tuesday, I believe it was on Tuesday, came to the school board meeting and presented this to the school board and talked about it and I just thought it was a great opportunity for them to come to our own City Council and represent Peetown because they're awesome. Fall sports have been a huge hit.
Yeah.
They've been doing awesome, so take it away, Becca.
Perfect. I was gonna let these girls talk, but they're not gonna know. Just kidding, I won't make them do it. So we just kind of talked about, so I kind of went over just our season. Some of you guys know you were awesome to come to games. We had a fantastic season, actually we only have fifteen girls, which is small.
Everybody look over here.
For those of you who don't know soccer, because I know it's not that new to Parowan, but it is new to some in Parowan, so there's eleven girls on a field, we only have fifteen girls, and they played both varsity and JV, so they were in really good shape. In this last, like what, two weeks, they're probably out of shape now. But they, so we, our preseason, we played three A teams, we won two, lost two. And then we went into our region and we won all of our games, we were undefeated in region, so, which was super awesome. They worked super hard and they weren't even, what was our closest game? Millard at home would have been our closest game, one zero, but beyond that, they were not close games. So it was awesome and then we, for the state championship, we played Grand, beat Grand, and then we went up and played Saint Joseph's and we lost two zero to Saint Joseph's. But some fun facts about that game is the girls held them to zero zero at half and that has never happened before in a semifinal game for Parowan Soccer. And they actually didn't score till the sixtieth minute, so that was good. And I'll say the same thing I said at the school board meeting when Saint Joseph's was awarded a goal. And you can ask me about it later, I won't go into it, but they all know about it, they'll tell you about it too. But these girls are awesome. They are, one big thing when I decided to coach soccer is, I think soccer is, I like to coach soccer because soccer's my favorite sport, but I like to coach because I love these girls and they are fantastic humans. This is kind of a fun fact too, because I think volleyball will come talk to you guys next time, but we had a meeting with a bunch of the coaches at the high school last year after state championships were won and tried to figure out how we could continue a winning culture in Parowan. And that doesn't necessarily mean just winning all of our games, because winning isn't everything, but how to create a winning culture, so that means showing up for our kids, showing up for our community, for these girls to show up for their community too. And we came up with the hashtag Ram Fam and I feel like these girls were such an epitome of it. Everywhere they walked, they had Parowan on their shirt, they made sure they represented Parowan well. I had so many compliments about these girls, I mean in Millard, which is our biggest competition in soccer, I had mom saying, "We love playing Parowan, your girls are so nice, they're so kind." And so these girls are awesome, I'm lucky I get to coach them, I feel like I get the attention from it, but if they weren't so scared, they'd talk to you about it. But make sure when you see these girls out and about, this is only half of them, they really are fantastic humans and they'll change the world more than I did, so I'm really proud of them and they're awesome. Go Parowan.
Deanna Gale, Deanna Gale, are you scared to talk?
Yeah.
I just wanted to give you an opportunity, I noticed that there were all state athletes and this means they're athletes that have a four point O, is that right? And also excelled in athletics?
Yeah.
And you're one of those all state athletes?
Yes.
So I wanted to just recognize her here too.
Thank you.
All right, the only...
Coach Evans? You need to mention the fact that Parowan is actually the state champ in public schools.
Yes.
The top four were three private schools and Parowan High School.
Right, that's a good one.
You can't, when you can recruit kids, and our kids played them head to head and they need to be congratulated.
Yeah, we do.
And I will say too that Parowan Soccer played with a lot more class too than our competitors.
I agree.
That's always, that's always good too.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, my little public comment is just, I've been going through our goals and it's been really fun to put down what we've accomplished in the last few years and it's lists and checks and asterisks and we got it and exclamations and it's just been really fun. I plan on doing a state of the city of some kind, but it's just a matter of timing with, you know, a lot of other things going on. But I also went through our council retreat from the first of the year with the council members' goals and was able to check off a lot of their goals as well, so it just was really fun. I just wanted to let you know as a community how much I love being your mayor and how much I love the work and how much I love the progress. And with that opening up to public comments, I wanted to be sure that there weren't any public comments that were in any way politically charged. It just is a sensitive time for our city right now in that department and I just want to be clear that public comments time is really set aside for you to express a lot of things, but probably not political opinions just because of the sensitivity of this time of year for our city. And with that, I will open the time to you.
My name is Diana Peterson, I live here in Parowan and each one of the councilmen received a photograph that I took of the John C Fremont Memorial. It's on Main Street and it's in disrepair. And I don't know if the council or the city is in charge of those monuments or whether or not, because right down at the bottom it says, "This was put up by the little Salt Lake chapter." So I don't know whether or not, yes, that's the one. It's in disrepair, it's, the rocks are falling off, and it really, I mean, that's part of the city. The city has these little monuments all over town and it just feels really sad to me that this is in the shape. So I don't know who it is that needs to be notified about this.
Mayor, can I make a comment on that? The Sons of the Utah Pioneers have come to the historical preservation. They are working on getting this particular monument repaired. They've got the money set aside, what the problem that they're facing is finding a mason that can do the job the way that it needs to be done. So we're all very much aware of the deterioration on the Fremont Monument and action is being taken and as soon as Sons of the Utah Pioneers get back to us then we're gonna move ahead. You had some comment, Dan, on that?
No, I was just gonna say the same thing. We've talked about it three times, four times in the past two months, trying to find the right stone mason. We do want to rebuild it with actual stone rather than like a fake, you know, facade type stone that they use now on houses, getting a mason that can do that. One of the most important things is we want to make sure that we keep water from getting inundating into the monument. Right now what you have is you've had water getting inside that, plus some of the sandstone that, or some of the more, I'm not a geologist, but the stones that tend to crumble, it's probably beyond just like patching it, it's probably gonna have to be kind of a full rebuild of that monument with a new cap on it that keeps moisture out of it, so yeah, we've been working on it.
Thank you.
That's all I wanted to do.
Thank you for your attention to those things, they're important.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, Heather Pete, Parowan City resident and planning and zoning, but that's whatever. I was actually wanting to ask if our voting ballots have been printed yet, only because I went on utah.gov and I've noticed unfortunately that Matt Gale is no longer on that. We only have five candidates.
I can address that. Councilmember Gale informed me before it was announced that he was withdrawing and I was able to inform the county and so he is not on the ballot.
Right, but that only gives us five options. So can, so there's no way to move the person who had the next most votes up? Is there going to be an option for a write-in? Or are we only limping?
There's always an option, but there is a date, oh, sorry.
That's unfortunate, okay. All right, well, sorry that you're leaving, Matt, because, anyway, nothing political.
Thank you.
Do you want me to comment on that, or should you leave alone?
If you'd like to.
I did withdraw my name, it was a hard decision, but something else is taking my time up in my church and stuff like that, I need to devote most of my time on that now. So that's why I did withdraw my name on that. So apologize if it's caused any conflict, but I think it's better for me and my wife to do that.
Thank you, and thank you for your time on council, really appreciate you. And ballots will be mailed out on October thirty first? They'll be mailed out in your mail on the thirty first of October? I think that was one of your other questions, if they had been mailed out.
If they had been printed, it would be out of the...
I got you, okay, sorry, I just misunderstood what you said.
Hi, Jessica Smith, I did have a question, I know that we've been in talks regarding the library and with the situation going on there. I know that we've, it's been discussed here about kind of a refurbishment and there's continued discussion about that. My only concern is, are we also thinking about, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but I think we said that the same tiles that had the asbestos in the front were also under a carpeted area, is that correct or am I wrong in that?
Do you want me to comment on that?
Sure.
During public commentants? I don't know that, it's possible.
Okay.
We did remove the tile from the bathroom that, where there was, there were some issues and from the front with an asbestos removal company.
Okay.
So I don't know about in the back room that is carpeted over tile, whether that's what the case is.
Exactly, okay. And that would be my only thing is, would we be open then to discussing if we're gonna be putting a remodel into all of this? That if there's a possibility that we're also dealing with asbestos again in the future, we maybe look into removing that before the whole thing goes...
Oh, a hundred percent. Absolutely. The indictment will be done properly, thank you though for your concern, that's a good point. All right, anyone else? All right, we'll move on now from public comment and we did have Commissioner Mike Blake join us. So if it still pleases the council, we'll move forward. Oh, we can do the consent meeting first.
Do we need to do the public hearing first?
Oh my goodness, I'm getting so ahead of myself. Public hearing, we're gonna hear comments regarding an ordinance that amends the process by which zoning ordinances are amended by changing the number of days notice that must be given for a public hearing from fourteen days to ten days and by changing the language. Dan, would you like to talk about that?
Yeah, we've talked about it once and then it's gone to Planning Commission where there was a public hearing and there was a favorable recommendation to amend it and then it is brought here. I'm happy to talk about it, although I don't have any official presentation. Essentially, the state code changed and changed the number of days on a public hearing when we are amending our land use code from fourteen to ten. So this would essentially make our code line up with the state code. And the other thing is, is the new, with the new change in the state code, it allows a city to have with, from its city council to do a public hearing, but it does not require them to do a public hearing. Our current code requires both the Planning Commission and the city council to do a public hearing. So this would update it, so it still allows the city council to hear it if they would like to, but does not require the city council to hear it if they don't want to. So anyways, that was the, that's the crux of it that was talked about and then a public hearing and talked about and a positive recommendation now to you guys. So it's pretty simple, I don't, you know, I don't want to overburden.
Will you just simplify what it makes possible with ten days as opposed to fourteen?
Oh, so that's actually probably the most functional part of this as far as the city goes. Oftentimes, we'll be in Planning Commission and we'll be discussing a change that we would like to recommend to the code. And if they make a motion to do that, currently with the fourteen day requirement, it means that there's no way that they can notice it and put it out there and have a public hearing in the next agenda. So basically, anytime they're ever gonna make any changes, it's gonna kick it out there, you know, usually a month. That's just to have the public hearing, so it slows the process down and sometimes we want government to go slow and want to deliberate and think about it. In this case, it's been, you know, even if it went from fourteen to thirteen, it would still be, it would still satisfy that because you can't, at the end of the meeting, you don't have a full fourteen days for two weeks out to have it at the start of the meeting, so it just makes it, it's always gonna be, you know, a full four weeks out before we can even talk about it again, so anyways, that's what you meant, right?
Right. Yes.
Also, I'm so sorry, when I posted the original agenda, I put, "And by changing the language," and stopped. Anyway, it's changing the language from shall to may in regards to the city council holding a public hearing as well as planning and zoning, so I apologize for anybody who saw that.
And just to be clear, Planning Commission always has to hold a public hearing, no matter what.
You want a motion to go into a public hearing?
Sure. So I'll entertain a motion to go into the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Well, let me make the motion first.
I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion first and then I'll let you second. I'd like to make a motion to move into the public hearing to hear comments regarding an ordinance that amends the process by which zoning ordinances are amended by changing the number of days notice that must be given for a public hearing from fourteen days to ten days and changing the language from shall to may in accordance with the city council holding or not holding a meeting, a public hearing.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We don't have to sit here for very long, so if nobody has a comment on that. All right, seeing nobody moving toward the podium, we'll move on now and we will close the public hearing. I need a motion to do so.
Mayor, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving now into our consent meeting, we have Items Six and Seven. These are usually administrated by nature and can be approved by one motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent meeting, Items Six and Seven.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving now into our, we're going to go forward to our work meeting and we're going to start with Item Fifteen and then we're going to come out of our work meeting, back into our action meeting, and then we'll finish up with our work meeting after that. So I need a motion to go into our work meeting.
I'll make a motion to go into our work meeting for Item Number Fifteen.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, we'll move into Item Fifteen. And we have, well, we'll start with our chief Adams and then he can introduce people in an order that is appropriate for his presentation. Thank you. So I can introduce kind of the topic. He and I were talking about how the bond affects Parowan specifically just in kind of following this along the way in the different meetings that have been held and things like that. I just talked to him about his position here with Parowan and how, you know, he saw things and what he was experiencing as a chief, what his officers were experiencing. And when he told me what I had kind of heard, but then he reassured or reinforced that what I'd heard was correct, I asked him if he would come to our city council meeting and just kind of catch us up to how it affects us here on a local level, right? So that's why he's here tonight.
All right. So this will be brief on my part. Are jails undersized for the county's needs? We're a part of the county, Parowan. I've had no less than six people since all of these town hall jail meetings have started come into my office and ask me, "Why don't you just hold people in our cells?" Does anybody, like, does anybody else find that funny? Like, and literally, that's true. Like people believe that we have jail cells here in this building that I can put people in, we do not.
You don't?
No.
Well, I can give you a tour anytime you guys want.
I've actually heard that comment too, so...
Right.
I was like, I'm pretty sure we don't have anything back there.
Yeah, you're right, we don't. I've also been told, "Why don't you just put them in the old cells in the old courthouse?" Which I believe those are probably still there. I don't, can I put somebody in there, counselor?
You could, you could, but...
Am I gonna get sued?
And I'd be defending you.
Are you guys gonna get sued for it, right?
There's no plumbing in them, they still exist, but there's no plumbing, I've been in them.
Correct. So, that's a no, that's...
And they were only ever designed to be holding cells during court.
Right. And we actually do have one small room that has a door you can lock like a holding cell, but it is full of storage and files and there would have to be a full-time person to watch whoever was in there. We obviously don't have the staffing to staff what we do now, plus twenty-four hour coverage of prisoners or laundry, kitchen, anything like that. So it's not even remotely an issue. Due to overcrowding recently, well, since about 2012, our jails, because of the size problems and because of the overcrowding problems, they've been refusing Class B and C misdemeanors if they aren't an immediate danger to the community or the subject that's committing the crime. So that boils down to, a B misdemeanor would be a theft or an assault. Many drug and alcohol offenses, most drug and alcohol offenses, most property crimes, all misdemeanor warrants and nonviolent or less violent domestic violence assaults and assaults can all be turned away if we can find a way to separate the parties for the night. It's not how it was meant to be, it was meant to if you have probable cause... It was meant to, if you have probable cause that they have done a crime, they're to be incarcerated until they post bail, once it's set, and then are judged for that crime and found out whether they're guilty or innocent. Due to overcrowding, judges have also been releas, releasing certain prisoners on their own recognizance or with a signed promise to appear letter so they can make room for the more violent or more serious offenses. This is getting worse every year and I'm not bashing on, I don't know if Sheriff's here is, Sheriff's here, I'm really not bashing on your facility or your people. I'm just telling you what we deal with. This means that on some occasions, when we would be making an arrest, we don't make an arrest or we are told by the jail, "Can you find another solution?" We're full. And we have people sleeping on mattresses on the floor in pre-booking. They, they just, they really, really are overfull. What's that's done is a lot of my people is what, like, more of the common offenders that offend and reoffend, they're getting more emboldened every time we deal with them. I've personally been told on the side of the road after finding an individual that had methamphetamine on him, "Go ahead and arrest me. They're not going to take me and you know it. I'll be out before you're done with your paperwork." And he's right. At that point, on that day, he was right. And so, I wasn't able to arrest him. That just shows the attitude and how emboldened some of the subjects are getting that my people deal with. My officers are in more danger every time they go out because of this. The criminals that we're dealing with, especially the repeat offenders, they know that there's certain things they can get away with. They know that they'll get out easy and they're not afraid to do it. So, people on offenses where I wouldn't have normally worried about my kids, my officers, going alone on, now I'm worried about because there's just exponentially more chance for people to fight and to throw punches and to run because there's no consequences. Anyway, that's my soapbox. This jail is necessary. The bond that's going to be on the ballot that, to be voted for is the best of a horrible choices, but it's the best choice and we need it. We have to have the jail. If anybody has questions, I have Councilman Mike Blake, I have Sheriff Ken Carpenter, I have our jail commander, Shalon Shaver, here and they'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you guys have. If you guys want to come up and they can ask questions.
I think Shalon wants to come up and.
I can see it in her eyes. You can tell. I'm, I'm sure there's a question here or there on, on how the bond works or what it is. So, just so that you can tell your constituents, the town hall meetings we've been holding have really been quite poorly attended. And everyone that has showed up, that had their mind made up, a lot of them, a lot of them, I would say the majority, at the end of listening to the reality and not misinformation, have changed their minds about how they feel about the bond. I, I don't want to pay more taxes either, but we got to have a jail. My guys need to be safe. My people here that we protect in this town need to be safe. They don't need to worry that I'm going to pick up somebody that just committed a domestic violence act and take him to jail and within two hours, he's going to be back at the house terrorizing his family again. That's a reality, has happened and does happen because of the overcrowding problems. Anybody have questions for me?
Well, I want you to touch on what it looks like because the questions that I get and I think maybe other council members get is like, "We're building," and I hate this word, the Taj Mahal.
Town Hall.
And they're living in the Laphalogery.
Okay, great. It's all concrete.
But after the town hall meeting that I did attend here, which.
Right.
There were like fifteen people.
Which we very much appreciated.
You know, but if you'll explain to like what it looks like and what's actually in there and I think that will clear up some misinformation too that way.
Sheriff? You're, you're a much better public speaker than I am. I don't know about that. You did well.
I'll come along just for moral support of the sheriff.
What we're looking at is, we're looking at a two pod facility. And the reason we're looking at two pods, a lot of people think that that's way too big. The reason is, is because one pod would meet our immediate needs right now, today, but within ten years, that one pod would be full and we would have to build a second pod anyway. At that point, we're only ten years into the bond payment. So, we would have to take out a second bond to build the second pod. And the second pod would, would be exponentially more expensive to build in ten years down the road than it is right now, today. So, it makes a whole lot more sense to build for the future and do, do it right once the first time, have the extra bed space available to us. And then we can take that extra bed space and rent that extra bed space out to the state in the federal inmate program, inmate placement program and bring other tax dollars that are being paid around the state and the nation into Iron County to help infuse our own economy, to help pay off our bond and help remove the tax burden from the back of the taxpayer. And we can do that. We already know, I just met with Director Redd here, what, about two months ago, Scott?
Yep.
About two months ago. And he indicated that next year, that the State Department of Corrections is going to need about an additional four hundred and fifty bed spaces above what they already require from the sheriffs to fill around the state. On the federal, federal side of things, you know, we constantly have the US Marshals knocking on our door asking us to increase our, our federal inmate numbers. Right now, the federal government is looking at abolishing all of their contracts with private prison companies, which would require them to be able to house them with, with state and local entities. You know, so give you an example, Trump has a private prison over there that houses federal inmates. They've got twenty-five hundred inmates that are going to have to have a new home to go to. So, the problem isn't for us, isn't being able to find them. You know, we, we know that that's available to us. There's been a lot of people that have, have expressed concern about bringing state and federal inmates into our community because they want to say that we're going to release them here. That absolutely is not true. Okay? When we bring those here, state inmates are released in the county where they were arrested. So, the only state inmate that would ever be released in Iron County is a state inmate that was arrested in Iron County and would be coming back to us anyway. Any other state inmate is going to be released in the county where they were arrested. Federal inmates typically are short-term inmates for us. They're typically sixty to ninety days. And the reason is, is because they're inmates that have been convicted of their crime, but they haven't been sentenced yet. And so, we're an intermediary stop for them, waiting for their sentencing. Once they get sentenced, then they go to the federal penitentiary where they're going to spend the rest of their, their term. Questions have been raised about, well, don't their families follow them here for visitation? And the answer is no, they don't. And the reason they don't follow them here is because we don't allow in-person visitation. All visitation is done on tablets. So, there's no reason for them to follow their, their inmate here because they're not going to get to see them anyway. They're only going to get to visit them on tablet, which they can do from the comfort of their own living room. But, from a, the aspect of what does it do for the county, well, according to Director Redd, right now, we're getting paid about sixty-eight dollars a day for inmate. Next year, it's going up to ninety-three dollars a day. That's a huge increase for state inmates for us. That can make a tremendous difference. If we have four hundred additional bed spaces that we can rent out to state and federal government, we can bring in an additional thirteen million dollars a year. Thirteen million dollars a year that can help pay for the increased staff, help pay for the maintenance of the facility, help pay for the deficit that currently the county is having to pick up and help pay the bond down. So, it takes the, the burden off of the taxpayer that much quicker. So, for us, this is a win-win situation for everybody involved. As Chief Adams has indicated, this is absolutely necessary for us. We're at a point where we don't have a choice. We have to do something. And if we don't do anything, give you a little Marine Corps quote, "The battlefield of life is strewn with the bones of indecision." If we kick this can down the road, that's a decision that's a bad decision because all it's going to do is cost us more money. Right now, it's estimated that if this bond fails, that next year, if we wait one more year, the cost is going to go up six to ten million dollars. Okay? It doesn't get any cheaper. If we'd been able to build this four years ago, like we were trying to do, it would have cost us twenty million dollars less and then at a two percent interest rate. Right now, we've been able to secure four and a half percent interest rate, which has made the overall bond payment for a four hundred and five thousand dollar house, which is the average house in Iron County, it'd make that bond payment a hundred and fifty-four dollars a year, which is about twelve dollars and seventy-five cents a month. You know, we have to do it. If we, if we wait another year, it's going to go up another six to ten million dollars, figure out what the bond payment's going to be next year. But, it has to happen. It, it's going to, it's going to be forced upon us at one point by, by the Utah Supreme Court, if that's what it comes down to. Because eventually, if we keep going in the conditions that we're currently in, we're going to start getting sued. We're going to start getting civil lawsuits brought against us because of the living conditions. Guess who's going to pay for that? It's not going to be me because I've done my due diligence. I'll get released from the lawsuit. But, all the taxpayers are not going to have a choice. They're going to be forced to pay those lawsuits. Dan Jessen told us here a while back, "When's the best time to plant a tree?" Twenty years ago. But, if we didn't plant it twenty years ago, when's the best time to plant a tree? Today. We need to plant our tree today. We need to move forward on this because in the long term, even though that, right now, isn't a very good time, it's not going to get any better anytime soon. It's something that we have to do. We don't have a choice. We have to move forward. This is a necessity that by state law and by constitutional mandate is placed upon the sheriff of every county. I am obligated by state law and by the US, by the state constitution to provide a jail for all the law enforcement agencies in the county. And I'm not allowed to pass any of that cost on to them. I have to bear that cost myself within the county. We have to do it. Our county is growing. It's just the nature of the beast. The county is growing. Our crime rate is going up. And a lot of that crime rate that, that Chief Adams has talked about is because of basically catch and release. Because we catch them, we bring them in, we can't keep them because we don't have a bed space for them. So, we have to put them back out on the street and they go out and reoffend against our public. That's not the way to do business. That is a horrible way to do business. If there's enough proof to convict them of a crime and the judge sentences them to jail sentence, then they need to do every day that that judge is assigned to them. We can't do that right now. Chad Dotson, our county attorney, has just recently told us that right now, his office is prosecuting about seventeen percent higher crime rate than he's ever prosecuted in the past. We have to do something to be able to address these problems. We want to be able to keep our community safe, but we can't do it without your help. And that's the bottom line. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has. Yes, sir?
Just curious, how many bed spaces here compared to what you have available now?
So, our current, our current jail facility has two hundred and fifty-four bed spaces, but because of the poor environmental design of it and because of the classification requirements that are placed upon us, we can only effectively use about a hundred and eighty bed spaces. We could easily fill close to two hundred. You want me to do this?
Well, I'm taking out time.
Thanks, Callie.
You're welcome.
Okay. So, Callie's, Callie's used to taking care of me. So, we, right now, effectively, we have a hundred and eighty bed spaces. We can, we could probably easily fill between two and two hundred and fifty bed spaces of county inmates today. So, this, this facility, total bed space in this facility is six hundred and seventy-two bed spaces. So, there's about, if you remember what it is, Michelle, three hundred and sixty bed spaces in one pod? I think it's about three sixty-four in one pod.
Can you turn the change or trees?
No, you don't. I mean, that's a, you know, that's a great question. It really is a great question. Because I've had a lot of people say, "Well, just do what Joe Arpaio did and just build a tent city." Well, you know what? I've met Joe Arpaio. I have a hand autographed pair of his pink underwear. I love Joe. But, Joe Arpaio has paid out probably four times as much lawsuit money as it would cost to build this, this one facility. So, figure it out. Is that worth it? I can build a tent city pretty dang cheap, but y'all are going to pay for it. So, that's already been proven by, by Joe and his, his experiment. Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry. So, my question was, what's the reasoning behind the private sector slowing down now? Is one of the.
I don't know. I have no idea. That's, that's a federal government thing. That's what they're, what they're doing. I don't know why they're doing it, but that's what their plan is. I can't give you a better answer than that. Yes, sir?
Can you address the operation grievance costs of that facility that we're dealing with?
Yeah, I, I can't tell you exactly what they are because I, I really don't know. But, I can tell you this, is that it's much, much more economically feasible than our current facility is. And one of the things that's really nice about it is the way it's been designed. It has these big chases in it. It has all the utilities in it. It's very, very accessible to our maintenance with all the new technology and all the new materials. And the way that they've designed it, it makes it possible for us to be able to do repairs and to fix things very easily. Whereas, like with our current facility, it's almost impossible for us to do things. Give you an example, our floors are about two feet thick of reinforced concrete and all of our sewer lines and all of our electrical conduit and everything runs through that concrete. We can't get to it. We can't repair them even if we have the technology to do it. We can't do it. So, from a, from an economics point, it's a lot more, it's a lot more maintainable.
So, and how will those funds be generated through the required working operations?
Well, initially, it's going to be through those contract inmates. Though initially, you know, eventually, someday, we may be so full that it's going to revert back to the county. But, that's for, not for years and years and years to come. For the, for foreseeable future, it'd be through going out to contract inmates. Yes, sir?
Can I just, can I add to that a tiny bit? I always, we always, in county commission, we always yell at people and they don't say their name and, for the record. So, Mike Blake, representing the Iron County Commission. So, with those contract inmates, right now, our general fund is supplementing the jail about three point eight million dollars a year. So, the three, the, we're actually paying three point eight million dollars a year out of the general fund to subsidize the jail currently. Three point seven two six is what we're paying. It's what we're subsidizing the jail currently. When we have, when we have both pods full, we're looking at about an eight million dollar a year surplus after the cost of employees and after the cost of operation and maintenance. That does a couple of things. Number one, it frees up this three point seven million dollars out of the general fund that no longer has to go to subsidize the jail, which is now opened up for other use in the county, whether that be roads or whether that be, you know, whatever the things are that, that operate out of the general fund. So, this immediately opens up, you know, frees up three point seven million dollars in the general fund that we're now subsidizing the jail with. Estimated cost, like the sheriff said, we're looking at, at this generating about thirteen million dollars a year. That's about seven to eight million dollars a year over and above, you know, ultimately what, what our costs are as far as maintenance and personnel in the jail. That money initially will be put right back into paying off the bond so that we can, you know, we have a thirty-year bond. We want to pay that bond off just as quickly as we can. Because in this model, as soon as that bond's paid off, it drops off. And that's, the taxpayers are. And that's, the taxpayers are alleviated from paying any more of that bond. And the way that it's set up and the way that these bonds work, we're not allowed to use one penny of that bond money for anything but the construction of the jail. So, once that bond is paid off, once, you know, that bill is paid off for the construction, that bond goes away. We can't up it, you know, continue or bond again for something else as far as the construction. So, this design makes it possible not only to pay that bond off earlier, but once that bond is paid off, this gives us the operating expense to continue on with the operations and maintenance and personnel that are going to be required to run the facility without having to subsidize it from the general fund.
Would this be a good time to introduce Representative Ship?
I'd love to introduce Representative Ship. Does he know he's going to be introduced?
He does.
Excellent.
He's going to talk to us about a bill that he's going to be running that helps alleviate some of this cost to us on our property taxes.
Great. Good, because we talked about it every night in our town hall.
Oh, okay. Well, considering the issue here, what's going on, what's needed, I went to the State Tax Commission to discuss with them how normally some of these jails are paid. And right now, in Salt Lake County, because of the state prison, they actually have an earmark for some of their taxes up there on sales tax that goes towards paying for that. So, I'm opening up a bill file. Bill files open, the bill's been drafted already. We just need to tweak a few things with it. But what this bill does is the state legislature has to pass this bill that would allow a county, counties from the third through the sixth class or the smaller counties, to increase the sales tax in the county by up to 1%. They don't have to do 1%, but up to 1% for the purpose of building a county jail. It said the earmark thing, the money that's raised with that tax increase, whatever it is, whatever the commissioners decide they need to do, that would also, it would have to go to that earmark function and could not be used for anything else. It could be used for remodeling of a jail or building a new one. So, this is going to be, got to be a voter-approved process too. So, the county commissioners decide, okay, we're going to raise, we want to raise the taxes by half a percent, probably wanting to be below the taxes of other counties and cities so that we don't send people other places to buy their products, right? And so, then that would be put on the ballot and all the voters in the county would have to vote in favor of it in order for it to be able to go into effect. So, this isn't something that can just be put on the folks, you're going to have to do this on the sales tax. But the advantage is this, as far as I see it, I'm probably as opposed to increasing taxes of anybody in the state legislature, okay? I don't like it, but this is a situation where I'd rather see the taxes being helped, for this to be helped to be paid by outside people that visit our county, rather than putting on the burden on the property taxes of our residents. And so, we get all the visitors that come to Shakespeare, that they come to Perrone to enjoy the, you know, trails, Brinehead and so on, that they will be paying that tax, which will help pay on this bond. That's what I would assume would happen, is the county would take the money and apply it to this bond to pay it down quicker. And so, that's the nexus of the bill right there, is voter-approved. Commissioners have to say how much. It's only going to be up to 1%. So, the first item on the agenda on this thing is, I've got to get my colleagues at the state legislature to go along with it too. And so, I think we can get that done. So, I've talked to quite a few of them already, and that'll be coming up in the general session. And frankly, when this bill comes to committee, it would be good for certain folks to come and testify at the committee and discuss the importance of it as well. So, anyway, is there any other, any questions? I mean, I've been talking to these people and normally, we talk to you and face you, Mayor, is there any questions you have?
Just that evening on the town hall, it would reduce that amount added to our property taxes potentially.
The amounts that we, I asked the State Tax Commission, based on the revenue of in 2022, of all the sales in the county, it was like $1.5 billion. This would raise, I think we figured around $3.6 to $4 million a year in extra tax if we only did a quarter of a percent. So, that would be, you'd have to figure out what's needed on that. Does that answer that question?
I've got a little bit to add to that, but I don't know if you know or not. So, once this bill file was introduced, we met with our finance folks, our bond counsel and our grant folks. And what we found out is this, if we have that other revenue stream from this consumption tax, and we can show that three and a half million dollars from that revenue stream are going to go to that bond payment, now our bond payment's going to be about $5 million a year. If we have that revenue stream that goes, you know, from the consumption tax to that bond payment, the commission can then reduce the amount of money that goes, that's required from the taxpayers to pay that bond. So, for instance, and we did the math, Luke, who's not here tonight, who's our county auditor, basically on that $405,000 home, which, you know, the assessment to that would be $153 a year. If we add this consumption tax to that, we would be able to reduce that yearly payment to the average taxpayer to about $65 a year. So, if we can, and this is something that can't happen, you know, until next year, hopefully that, you know, we'll be able to put this in place in the, you know, beginning of 2025. At that point, there's a real chance that we would be able to drop that assessment from $153 a year to about $65 a year to the average taxpayer. That would be allowed in the bond, according to our bond counsel and such. So, not only would it help pay it off, but, you know, I mean, we would greatly reduce the effect on property tax at that time. The kicker is, and the part that sucks, and I say that a lot, there's a lot of this that just sucks, we have to have that entire bond amount in place before we can even, before we can break ground or even start the project. So, the bond at this point is absolutely necessary to have that in place before we can start the project. There's all sorts of things that we can do after that in the years to come to mitigate that cost, but we have to have the bond up front. There is no other option than to have that in place at the very beginning. And then over the next few years, we have a lot of options to try and whittle that down and take the burden off of the taxpayer, you know, with the contract inmates, with consumption tax. One question that comes up almost every time we meet is, what are we going to do with the old facility? The old facility's going to be sold. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like at this point because, you know, when it gets to that point, we'll consult with real estate folks and figure out what we need to do to get the best bang for our buck out of that property. Whether it's sell it as is, whether it's knock everything down and sell it as commercial, whether it's to knock the jail portion down and sell the office building portion, and when we get to that point, we'll figure that out. But 100% of the proceeds from that sale of that property will go to pay the bond. It'll go directly onto that bond payment, is the plan, so.
One other thing I thought about on this bill is, and many of you may not know this, but when bills are passed in the legislature, they take effect 60 days after the end of the session. So, it couldn't take effect until end of May, and then I don't know what the process is with the county for it. So, it's probably...
Then it would have to go on the next ballot, next November.
Yeah, yeah. Well, then it would go on the ballot, yeah, because, so then it'd be 2025 before it'd go.
January of 2025. And one more thing about this tax, so because this tax is only for the payment of correctional facilities, once that bond is paid off, that consumption tax goes away as well. So, not only does the bond drop off, but that sales tax drops off as well as soon as the bond's paid. It's not a permanent tax. And it doesn't count for groceries.
Groceries are exempt.
Grocery, groceries are exempt. So, this is other goods, trucks, clothing, recreation, you know, these other things that we collect sales tax for, but not groceries.
And you're shopping in the county, right? So, please get them.
Yes, please shop local. That's, we'll go on our economic development side. Please shop local and it will help very much.
Judd had also asked where the location is. If any of you are familiar where Horse Alley is, off of Airport Road, it's right at the very west of Horse Alley. So, it's basically east of Metal Craft, west of Horse Alley. We bought 33 acres there, off the bottom of Horse Alley and up the north side of Horse Alley. If you're not familiar with Horse Alley, you may know where Staley West is on Airport Road. It's west of Staley West, a couple blocks, about four blocks west. Are there any other questions we can answer? Yes, sir?
Is the cost of this project currently locked in by contracts?
Yes, sir.
Or is it still susceptible?
No, it's locked in right now. And that's one of the nice things, is there's a lot of speculation on whether insurance or if interest rates are going to come down or not. If the interest rates come down, then we have the option of being able to lock in at a lower interest rate as well. So, right now, the $154 a year on a $405,000 house is the maximum that it would ever be. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Anything else?
No.
Mayor, counsel, we thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to address you and the community.
Did you have a question? I saw a hand shoot up.
So, I would, I don't know if this is humor or fact.
That's what we're here for.
But I was told that if the bond doesn't pass, that the county commissioners will pass it anyway, come hell or high water.
No, we don't have the, we don't have the power to do that.
I think they do, but they...
I don't know why you got this guy as an attorney, but he's fine, I guess. No, so really how this works, and so, once the bond, if the bond doesn't pass, we don't have the, I mean, that's by the voter. We don't have the power to override that. But what will happen, there's a couple of options that could happen. Next year, we were, I mean, we're going to have to come back again, and whether that is through the method of truth and taxation, which means that we basically raise taxes and it never goes away. We looked at that option this year and kind of went down that path. And when we really got looking at it, there was a couple of things. We can get better terms for the project. We can get better interest rate. We can get better terms on a geo bond than we can the other direction. If we were to do truth and taxation this year, it would've cost an average of $185 a house, where with this geo bond, you know, and we know that it's a risk that this could get voted out, but we got a better interest rate because of this. We got, I mean, we have the option to pay off early. We have all these other things that we didn't necessarily have without going to a general obligation bond. So, we thought, you know what? Because we can get better terms, this is actually going to cost the taxpayer less, let's put it in the hands of the taxpayer and the voters and trust them to do the right thing. And we've had a ton of people say, "Man, just trust us. You know, we trust you guys, you trust us." If it doesn't pass, though, two things. We'll either have to go to truth and taxation next year and just raise that tax permanently and it never drops off, or we go to another geo bond and go through the same process with the possibility of being voted down again. We know, and we've worked with our finance guys and our construction guys, we know that we're facing a six to 10 million dollar increase for every year that we don't do it. So, if we come back next year and say, you know, for either a truth and taxation or another geo bond, we're not going to say it's going to be an average of $153 a year, it's probably going to be more of an average of $200 a year. You know, it's exponentially going to go up for the time that we don't get it done. As I said, we're locked in on an interest rate, we're locked in contractually. And another thing, when this whole thing started, and I'm not going to take a bunch of time on this, but over the past several years, we've been able to save $20 million towards this project. This is actually a $100 million project, but that's not what we're asking for. Because we were able to bank $20 million knowing that we're going to have to do this project. The property's been paid for through that means, all of the engineering, the soils, everything's already paid for. The pre-construction and design portion of this process is paid for. The property was purchased with this $20 million. So, we're at a point now that as soon as this bond passes, we're able to drop shovels in the dirt. We'll break ground immediately and we have a two-year window of construction. So, you know, we're looking, you know, two years from December, this project should be done and there should be sheets on the beds. And everything up to this point, all of the costs that have been incurred have been paid for out of that fund. And I have to credit Dan Jessen, who was our auditor before y'all stole him, in being able to engineer those savings and that $20 million of savings for the county was really the work of Dan Jessen was able to do that. So, this could be $20 million worse than the ask. And if it continues, if it doesn't pass and if we have to push it out, it'll just be $6 to $10 million more a year moving forward. So, and like the sheriff said, has to be done. And two more minutes. On the current jail, basically what happened in the old jail, which was like two cells downtown Cedar City, the conditions were so bad, they had to build a new jail. And they came and they went through this exact same process. They went through a geo bond and it was shot down. They went through, you know, several options of financing and it was shot down over and over and over again. Ultimately, the Supreme Court of the state of Utah came and forced Iron County to build a jail. They forced the tax increase and that's how we got the jail now. And we don't want, you know, that's not something that we want. We don't want the Supreme Court dictating to us what we're going to do and how we're going to build it. But, I mean, literally, if this were to get kicked down the road two or three years, that's exactly what would happen.
I just want to say one thing, and it's not my job, and I'm careful to know what my job is. But since before Ken was there, I sat through many budget hearings and the sheriff's department saying, "We've got to do this, we've got to do this, we've got to do this," and watching maintenance costs go up. And I'm not disparaging the former commission, but this is hard. The commission that's here and the sheriff and all of the staff not kicking it down the road anymore, that was a hard decision. I was there that day when finally the decision was made, we go on this. And it takes time, it takes the public time to get up to speed. One of my biggest regrets before I left the county was we hadn't got this all the way to home base yet, and I really wanted to see it done. But if we could have been, like the sheriff said, two years earlier, the amount of savings that could have been there before prices did what they did and interest rates did what they did. But Mike's not overselling it. It's not, the interest rates probably aren't going to come down anytime really soon. Construction costs certainly are not going to come down. So, thanks for, that's not my quote, but I do like to use it about the tree. So, anyways, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Representative Ship, for being here. Appreciate your work.
Do you have any idea how many people are following the meeting? Is there a number?
Oh.
I'm a little apologetic because there's not more. I might turn after the meeting. And so, I'm hoping...
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
I don't know if we know.
Thank you. So, we now need to move out of our work meeting into our action meeting, and I need a motion to do so. Mayor, I'll make a motion to go into our action meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're going to go to action meeting item number eight. This is the financial partner agreement with UDOT for Utah's Patchwork Parkway PHWA Buyway Grant for interpretive kiosks and signage. This is Nancy Dalton here to present for us. And she's a Buyway Coordinator for the Utah Patchwork Buyway.
So, basically, as part of the, it's a federal highway, so it's a F instead of a P, byway grant, the financial partner agreement is part of the contract. We finally got the contract signed between UDOT and federal highways, and there's a lot of work that goes into that nowadays especially, which is great because they put in that accountability part, and I love accountability, being responsible. But this, it goes through and identifies what those duties and responsibilities are of the byway in hiring, in hiring contractors, paying the bills, submitting reimbursement forms, project financial reports, collecting the monies, and the most important part, the Buy America program in there, so it's the whole nine yards. Now, we have done, this is, agreement is the same one that they have used back when the byways were started, so the agreement hasn't changed any. In the past, Iron County used to sign it, but they are not in that position to do that at this point. Now, even though Parowan City says yes, you don't have any work to do, there's no additional costs, that's a byway coordinator's job to do, and so that's what we did before, and we worked closely with the UDOT. And in fact, this time around, I get my same person again, I'm so glad she hasn't retired yet, but the UDOT Region Four Project Planner, she and I, we're together on the phone or emails at least once a week, keeping tabs here. She is gonna make sure that every one of these duties and responsibilities are done. She's gonna make sure we also do the Buy America part, and I'm gonna make sure we're gonna do the Buy America part because in meetings with them and with FHWA, the feds, that is the most critical part of the grant. There are certain materials that you have to use that are Buy America. Not all the materials are, but there are certain ones, and if you don't use them, you either have to tear that out and replace it with the Buy America products, or you don't get your money. So, to make sure that we get, we keep in that most important aspect, I will become the most well-versed Utah scenic byway coordinator on the Buy America program, almost as well-versed as UDOT and FHWA. That's my goal, and then the second part, to make sure that it is, is we're gonna put that, a clause in the contracts with our contractors and suppliers, that those Buy America products will be used on the product, on the project. If not, they're responsible to either tear it out and replace it at their cost, or they pay for whatever funds that the federal highway does not pay. So, not that I'm a mini about that part, it is so critical because we're only doing twenty percent of the, the cost of the project, and the federal funds is eighty percent, we, we can't do the project without that. So, anyways, that is it, just a status update. So, we've got the federal highway contract signed, all we need now is the financial partner agreement signed, and the in-kind, 'cause we got the in-kind labor, equipment and materials agreed, I'm finishing that up this weekend, and then the fund part, the politics. We have to wait for Congress to pass the budget. So, that's where we are on the project. So, any questions?
Nancy, can you explain? So, when we, we had an action meeting back in March when we were talking about the budget, and we, we approved, 'cause normally we, Parowan City's contribution had been fifteen-hundred dollars in cash, plus any, you know, in match type stuff, and then this year we bumped that up, and it was like an additional forty-five hundred, but two thousand of it could be in-kind.
Right.
So if you subtract two thousand off of the forty-five, that's twenty-five plus fifteen-hundred. We budgeted four thousand dollars, that's what's in our budget right now.
Mm-hmm.
And the amended budget is more than that. The amended budget of the project has is five thousand dollars cash. Maybe you could talk through that whole thing with the councils, 'cause...
Yeah, great, great.
'Cause I had a couple say, wait, when did this change, and so maybe you could...
Great, great question. This project's gonna take at least two years to complete, so that five thousand dollar cash is over two years, so twenty-five hundred one, year one, twenty-five hundred year two.
Oh, okay.
Okay? Good question. And then the, we had that fifteen hundred dollars, which is the byway, uh, marketing, administration, operating costs in addition to that. And then this, we also have twenty-five hundred in-kind labor and materials for each of those two years, so, however that, let me, let me go to, I actually brought the budget. Yeah, so the cash is twenty-five hundred dollars year one, twenty-five hundred dollars year two. Then we have in-kind for each of the three communities, which is ten thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and sixty cent, sixty-seven cents, so, and just so that you're aware, Bryanhead Town has now said, we have such a short maintenance season up at Bryanhead, we're gonna go ahead and pay our ten thousand and eight-hundred and whatever thousand, uh, dollars, we're gonna pay our whole contribution in cash. So that's where they have budgeted their money. So, just so that you're aware, 'cause they were looking at their, and they have, just like the, you know, both Parowan and Pangwich, we have a limited, uh, public works crew, so, yeah.
Are you okay if I sum up the, the action item?
Mm-hmm.
Bri, Parowan is gonna take the position of the financial sponsor because it has to be a, a local government entity.
Yes.
County used to do it, the county won't do it anymore, it's gonna be Parowan, but, like I have an email from Brett saying, you know, I mean, this is really kind of more of an official thing, this is how it is with these grants, but they're partners in this committee, they're not gonna leave us hanging.
Right.
Um, and you are doing, well, you and the executive committee, mostly you, I'm on the executive committee, and Nancy does all the work, are gonna do the majority of the work on this, so it's not like it's an additional burden really for the city.
No, it is not, no additional burden for the city.
So does that sum up this correctly?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. So it's no additional money and no additional, um, requirement.
Labor, yeah.
Administrative burden.
Yeah. And I, I, I'll read you a part of what Brett said.
And just tell everyone who Brett is, because...
Okay, Brett Hauser is Bryanhead Town Manager. He says, "I can give you a verbal assurance on behalf of Bryanhead Town that if Nancy gets hit by the proverbial bus and the byway ceases to function, Bryanhead will not leave Parowan alone to pick up the pieces." So, anyway, he says, "We got your back." Pangwich has said the same thing, that they've got, got your back, so...
And, and the county's been really supportive.
Yeah, and they've really supported, and they do, both Garfield and Iron County are going to be covering the cost for the marketing aspect of the grant, so, and you do have the updated, should've had, received the copy of the updated budget that includes the in-kind cost, so, yeah, so. So you, one thing I will say about the byway committees, is the communities, is all three of them are wonderful to work with, and the two counties are great to work with as well, and they, they have your back, each of them supports each other, and when we meet, it's not necessarily, the best thing that comes out of it is what we have on our agenda, the best thing that comes out of those meetings is when Parowan asks Pangwich, "Who did you get to fix your heating problems or cooling problems?" Or Bryanhead says, "This is how we, you know, ask the same question or a different question." That's where the benefit of the byway comes from, is that, that, uh, supporting each other, so.
So, if the council doesn't have any additional questions, the action meeting item is asking for a council vote on if Parowan is willing to be the fin, to be the financial partner on the agreement.
You're looking for a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we are the financial partner agreeing with UDOT and for Utah's Patchwork Parkway Byway Grant.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you so much. We really do appreciate your support with our community, the byway, and I know what Brett said, I'll tell you, Brett did a lot of work to keep this going, so now it's the byway community to have to pick up his leadership and his passion, and we've got to, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. Okay, now we are moving into item number nine. This is a National Veterans Small Business Week proclamation, and so I received an email from Jackie Hobson. She works for the US Small Business Administration in St. George, and she's a veteran entrepreneur herself. In her message, she said, "This year is actually the tenth year the nation has done this, and we find it important, as one out of every small, every ten small businesses are owned and operated by our veterans. The reason I am reaching out to small Parowan is for a couple of reasons. First, I have met multiple veteran entrepreneurs from your city, which is awesome. Also, this year for Southern Utah, we will be hosting our third annual Veteran Unite Conference on November second to celebrate and to bring together our Southern Utah veterans. The event is in Washington County, but I feel like Southern Utah should include Parowan. At the event, on our registration table, I would love to be able to display a proclamation from the Southern Utah City Mayor's showing support for our veteran entrepreneurs. This is something we have done up north using National Small Business Week in May, but we have never done it here in Southern Utah." And so I sent this request to our city council and received affirmative responses that this is a proclamation that we would like to support, and a copy of the proclamation was in your packets, so I hope you have taken the time to read through that. She also, Jackie, did say that we have several entrepreneurs, past and present, I, I didn't have time today to reach out to Kristen Robinson or to Sandra Benson, but we could probably make a pretty long list of those people in our community, past and present, and so if you're interested, I can spend some time getting that information together, but my guess is the statistics of one in ten is probably accurate here in Parowan. So, it's a wonderful feeling for us to know, as we were talking about some of those people in our community, I stepped into Judy's office and Jeremy and Judy and I were talking about it, just to even know who those veterans are in our community, again, both past and present, so it's a neat thing to get to support. So with that, if we don't have any questions, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the proclamation to observe National Veterans Small Business Week in Parowan, and we would be part of that event in St. George on November second. I'll make a motion to approve the National Veterans Small Business Week proclamation.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. Now moving to item number ten, this is the certification of authorized individuals to access and/or transact with PTIF accounts, and this is resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten dash zero two.
Judy, maybe you could come talk about this.
It's her favorite thing to do, is to go to the front.
I know. See, you should've seen her, she did this little jump for joy.
This is something that we have to have on file, we just have to have this on file with the state treasurer, and he's getting authorization for Dan and I to be the transgressors that have access to that account, and the PTIF that's where I'm at.
Okay, and because this is a resolution, it will be a roll call vote required, so I would just need a motion and a second. I'll make a motion for the certification of authorized individuals to access and/or transact with PTIF accounts, resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten dash oh two. I'll second that motion. All right, and then by roll call? Rochelle Toppam, aye. Sharon Downey, aye.
Matt Gail, aye. Jim Shirtliff, aye.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you.
Basically, this is our big bank account up at the state.
Okay, now we're moving into item number eleven, and this is the amendments to the process of amending zoning ordinances, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten dash zero one.
This is what we had our public hearing on. I don't know if there's any questions I can talk, talk through or answer on that.
Does the council have any questions on that? We discussed it pretty thoroughly during public hearing.
Cali's bringing up the actual ordinance and the code that it would modify, fifteen point oh-two, point one-forty, and fifteen point oh-two, point one-fifty.
So I would just need a motion, a second, and a roll call vote. I'll make a motion for the amendments to the process of amending zoning ordinances, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten dash oh one.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, starting with Toppam? Rochelle Toppam, aye. Sharon Downey, aye.
Matt Gail, aye. Jim Shirtliff, aye.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. Now moving to item number twelve, this is amend general plan, the master transportation plan map regarding twelve hundred west, and this will be presented by Dan Jesson.
Okay.
No, she picked, she picks one.
Um, so this is a, this is an item that Planning Commission has been spending quite a bit of time on, and staff has been spending quite a bit of time on, regarding a future road. Oh.
I was like, I don't see, oh, there you go.
Okay. If you're familiar with Old Highway ninety-one, um, out near, um, the road that goes up to the, to the landfill, that road that goes up to the landfill is actually twelve hundred west. Uh, if you're familiar with, uh, the subdivision, is it Stillwater subdivision? Maple Springs subdivision, twelve hundred west also goes through that. Currently, it, the road dead ends at the flood channel, and with, looks like it's going to continue through at some point, and it is on our master plan, our general, our general plan's master transportation map to go through, and it is, um, a, I think it is designated as a major collector, it's a seventy-five foot easement, uh, sorry, right-of-way is the width of that. That road does not exist right now. Right now, what exists is a private driveway. Um, the, all of the property owners that surround this have been in discussions with the city about potentially abandoning that crossing, um, and downsizing that road on our future, um, uh, general plan's map from a major collector down to a, basically a sixty-foot right-of-way instead of the large connector. They also had, like I said, wanted to abandon the, um, the bridge, the future bridge. The Planning Commission heard this and decided to, for the time being, keep that, um, the discussion, um, at just downsizing the road and to have a, a larger discussion about the number of crossings at a later date, since that would affect basically the whole east, the whole west side of the city, south of two hundred south. And so, Planning Commission heard that, um, and, and sent a favorable recommendation to the city council to go ahead and amend the general plan's master transportation map. There's not a public hearing necessary, um, in this body for that, but there is a public hearing, which has been done in, in, in the, um, Planning Commission. So they, the Planning Commission made that recommendation, I believe it was unanimous. I don't know if it matters, but it kinda does sometimes, and, um, all of the property owners that surround this are in favor of this action. Uh, we also, for the record, had, of course, you know, we're in the middle of updating our master transportation plan, we've hired Jones and DeMille, it's about a one-year-long process, we were able to get the lead engineer to come to Planning Commission as a professional that, that does this and advise the Planning Commission on that, and he indicated that future abandoning several of these crossings would be advisable, um, due to the fact that when the plan was originally written, this was a four-foot wide irrigation canal and crossing them was not very expensive. Of course, now it is a major flood channel, is designated by the county... And all of the property owners that surround this are in favor of this action. We also, for the record, had, of course, you know we're in the middle of updating our master transportation plan. We've hired Jones and DeMille. It's about a one-year-long process. We were able to get the lead engineer to come to Planning Commission as a professional that, that does this and advise the Planning Commission on that. And he indicated that future abandoning several of these crossings would be advisable due to the fact that when the plan was originally written, this was a four-foot-wide irrigation canal, and crossing them was not very expensive. Of course, now it is a major flood channel, is designated by the county, and it literally is a major flood channel, is designated by Mother Nature. And the, the number of crossings that are gonna have to cross this is gonna have to be minimized, just from a cost standpoint. So, again, we're not abandoning that crossing in this, we're not doing that today, but in light of the fact that we know that we're gonna have to go from like nine crossings down to a smaller number of crossings, there's a high likelihood that this one may be end up being abandoned. And McLean Farmer, if you remember, he, he didn't sound like, or he said that it would be appropriate to downsize this to a residential road. If this serves as, if this doesn't cross right here, the only properties that this will serve will be this, these, that I'm, that I'm putting my mouse around right now. We have a, we have a potential couple of houses. There's been proposed maybe as many as four, a little minor lot subdivision here, and maybe a small subdivision here. So, to have a very large corridor to serve a very small area, especially when you have other access points that will be done, he said that it, it made sense to go ahead and downgrade that. So, that's where we're at for your consideration. I summed it up quickly, but we've been talking about this for a long time, and that's pretty much all I have. And if Dave was here, he could testify how long we've been talking about it, but...
Have we seen or heard, or seen, have we heard or gotten any negative pushback from anybody? Like, has there been any concerns?
No. There was, there was a little bit of discussion about which would be the appropriate crossings to abandon, and that's certainly still up for debate. However, and if you'd like, I can actually pull up a larger area that shows all of them. That way, we, I don't expect everybody to go into their mind's eye and think about all of the crossings. It seems like this would be a likely crossing to eliminate. Now, that's my own opinion. We have the Main Street crossing currently. We have a 600 West crossing currently, and then the next crossing is out here at 2200 West. We have postulated, in fact, we had a master transportation, just a work meeting earlier today, and they're thinking that maybe adding three crossings or two crossings will probably be much more of a, of a, of a good idea instead of, in fact, the irony, and I, I won't pull it up of the map, 'cause it'd take me a little bit longer, they actually, we actually have a master planned road which goes all the way out right on top of the flood channel that will have to be deleted from the plan, and, and certainly, we're gonna delete some of those. But if you look at these crossings that are already kind of here, we have 1,000 West, which we already have most of the easements already deeded to the city, and that seems like a likely crossing. It's pretty good spaced from 600. You have, this is actually 1375 West, and then there's another kind of a natural crossing maybe out here. So, I've seen a, a draft map that could have crossings like that. What we probably don't need is to spend the money to put crossings here, here, and here. And so, it seems like this crossing would be a, kind of a natural one to eventually maybe abandon. Downsizing it to a residential road of 60 feet is definitely connected to whether we will abandon it as a crossing, but it is not officially being considered. But it has definitely been proposed and supported by everybody that commented.
So, with that, if there aren't any other questions from council, I would entertain a motion to amend the general plan on the master transportation plan map regarding 1200 West.
I'll make a motion that we amend the general plan, master transportation plan map regarding 1200 West.
I'll second that.
All right. And then, do we need a roll call and an amendment of the general plan?
I don't think so. It's not done by ordinance or resolution, so...
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. No, with no opposition, the motion carries.
And for the record, we are not going to have a new map drawn immediately because we are working on a bunch of amendments to everything. The reason why we were moving this, this particular one up and not just waiting to finish it next summer when our master transportation plan finishes is because there's, there's development that's waiting on the outcome of this. All of those property owners are just waiting to see what the city is gonna do, because the width changes how much easements they're gonna have to dedicate and deed and all that stuff. So, but we're working on that map. We're at the cut, we're at the crayon phase, you know, metaphorically speaking, but we will have an updated map, which we will put on our, on our website. It, you can see the existing map. If you look at our general plan, which is on the website, it's atrocious. I can't wait till we have a really good, high-quality digital PDF updated, and we will have this change shown in that map when, as soon as we get that done.
So, I'm sure that this question is a given, but...
This was me doing this on paint, by the way. It'll look better than that.
Is like, when they put those subdivision, like, emergency vehicles being able to get in and out of there?
Yeah.
Like, that'll be part of their...
It'll look like a road in, in the city, just like a residential road.
Okay.
Normal asphalt width. It's just that instead of a 78-foot easement, or I mean, road dedication, because most of ours in the city are like 100-foot, and, and we don't use hardly much of that for the actual asphalt. There's always, there's always a lot of space on the sides. So, this will look like a normal road when it gets built.
Okay.
One way or the other. It's just they'll have to give up that much less land, because we don't expect it to be a future corridor.
Okay.
All right. And our timing worked out perfectly, because our item number 13 has arrived, and that is the disposition of Real Estate South Central Communications.
I'd like to introduce Terrence Mitchell. Should I tell him your nickname?
Which one?
The publicly acceptable one, or the one that my good friends know? So, South Central is Parowan's official cable company. We have a franchise agreement with, with South Central, although they do not provide cable TV anymore via standard cable connection. I think Jim has something to say about that.
I was one of the last customers.
They still provide services, and they're all over broadband nature. And you can still, can you still get TV over broadband? Like, from South Central?
From me?
Yeah.
No.
You can get Netflix and all that, obviously, but...
Uh, yeah. We don't offer TV of any kind after the end of this year.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna pull this up on, on screen, and maybe, Terrence, you can talk about the conversations that the city has been having with South Central. Oh, hang on. I'm gonna zoom in. I don't, I, I don't know what you're comfortable describing the purpose of this property from a security standpoint, but go, take it away. I don't wanna put words into your mouth, is what I'm saying.
Essentially, this site in Parowan is where all of our facilities come back to for us to provide the services that we do here, i.e. cable internet. So, what we currently have there is a building, and in the past, what we've done, I believe, is just leased the land that that building sits on. So, we've always owned the building, but we've leased the land. What we're wanting to do in this process essentially is purchase the land that our building sits on and some land around it to fence it in and make it nice, and, and then if we need to store a few things, we can there. But essentially, the, what, what the site does and will do is gonna be the same thing. It's just gonna do what it's always done. But we're just securing the site by purchasing the land around it, building a fence around it, and then cleaning it up. So, that's our intention.
We've been talking about this for some time. This is one of the things that we are able to talk about in closed session as we negotiate for purchase or sale of real property. And I probably should say real property instead of real estate. That's my bad, not Cali's. Per Parowan City Code, if the city is to entertain, if we are thinking about selling real property, typically, we will go through an auction process to sell off real property. There is an outlet in our code that allows us to entertain selling it to an individual entity without going through an auction process if there's a justifiable reason. I'm basically summarizing our code. If you want, we could look at the actual language, but that's what it says. In this case, this property is located currently within the, the city's, one of our properties where we have a well, we have storage, and we have other utilities there. Consequently, just to the south of where South Central has their facilities, the city has already sold off to Questar, now Dominion Energy, the, the piece of utility, the piece of ground that their critical infrastructure sits on, and they have that currently fenced off, and it's, it's kind of a no-brainer. This, this property is strategic to South Central, which is also then, by extension, strategic to the city, since they serve as, with a franchise agreement with the city. It does not make sense to auction this off to any other parties. It would not be, it would not be fair, it would not be right to do that. So, then, we have the awkward thing where what, the purpose of an auction is to find the market price, so that we are not doing any favors, and in this case, we had to establish what the value of this was. We talked with South Central, they, they, we agreed on an appraiser, and the South Central went and, and paid for that appraisal, and the appraisal came in at $24,000. Yet, there is some investment that's gonna have to be made by South Central in order to fence this off, which benefits them, but it also benefits the city, because it'll, it'll separate their property from our property and put in gates that both of us can use for our properties. So, they've made an offer of $20,000 to, from the, the market value of 24,000 as set by the appraisal with a third-party appraiser, and, and so, that's the consideration, is to accept $20,000. If we do not do this, we then go back to the negotiating table to renegotiate our land lease, which doesn't, I mean, it's, it's kind of sixes one, you know, six of one, half a dozen of another, which we go with. My thought is, is that we could take that money and, and put it towards another project or land or some other general fund need, but that's what's in front of you.
So, the gate that you're putting in, that will secure the entire shop parcel, or will it just secure the front part of that?
Yeah. So, what we've actually proposed is to put with, with the new, with the new parceled-off piece of land that we're buying, we'll fence that in completely with a gate to access just our portion, and then we're actually gonna improve the fencing on the, was it 300 East?
Yeah.
The 300 East.
It'll, it'll kind of modify our entrance, so they'll have to...
Yeah. So, what'll happen is, when we, when this is done, we'll kind of be in the way of your current entrance, so what we're gonna do is just improve the fence and put a gate in on that 300 East side for you guys, as well as our own gate for ourselves to access just our property. I think what we discussed on site was like a large rolling gate. Ours would roll one direction, yours would roll the other, and there'd be a couple posts with a fence in between, kind of a situation. So, essentially, it just gives you a, a new gate to access your property from, and then a, a gate for us to access our property from.
And we will get the rest of our yard back.
Exactly. Also, we, I guess we should probably mention, currently, the city does have that water line that goes across the north, the east portion, east portion of that property, and that easement is, will be in place as well for you guys to access that, that water line, should you need to.
Just for the, for the record, we have discussed this. We've talked through with Public Works. We've looked at, tried to look at all the angles, make sure that we were not overlooking anything, and, and I think this works for, for all, all parties involved. Public Works was supportive of it as well, so...
All right. So, if there aren't any additional questions from the council, I would entertain a motion on item 13.
I'll make a motion that we sell the land to South Central Communication as agreed for the 20,000.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We're gonna try to get this executed before the end of December to fit within South Central's budget, so we'll just carry forward administratively and do it.
Okay. Moving now to item number 14, approval to purchase chip spreader on state contract.
Okay. So, there's a little bit of a discussion item here, and, and I apologize to, we've been talking about this internally for a little bit, and Councilmember Downey called me and said, "What the heck is this?" And I told her I appreciated her call. So, the city has had a hard time recently doing what we have done over the years past. We, we've had a great relationship with the county road department, and essentially, we've had a, if, I shouldn't say this, close your ears, council. Bruce Anderson, the Public Works Director, Road Supervisor, calls these drug deals. The drug deal is a good thing in this case, where, where entities help each other out, and he calls them drug deals. So, this, there's always been a drug deal.
Drug deals are never good.
Well, I'm just, I'm quoting him. I would call it a informal memorandum of understanding.
That's better.
Okay. We've always had an agreement with this county that when we needed road maintenance done, chip sealing done, patch, patchwork done on our roads, we have been able to work with the county. We have used their equipment, and we have paid their crew their overtime rate, and they've come in and they've done so many lineal miles of road in a given year. And that has worked out well, because if we have to go pay a private company to come in and do this, the cost is much, much higher. The county has not, Bruce tells me they have the same number of employees in the road department that they had like 10 or 12 years ago, and yet, their, their road miles have gone way, way up, not to mention, they're kind of the de facto Public Works Department for the county for everything else, 'cause they happen to have the most of the equipment. So, they've gotten in a huge deficit. Not only do they do this for Parowan, but they do this for other communities as well, like Enix City. Enix City is, you're gonna, you're gonna be surprised to learn, Enix City is getting close to three times the size of Parowan. They have been through immense growth. They have, I think, approximately double the, the lineal miles of road that we have. But they're in the same boat. They have not been able to put, to do maintenance on their roads, because they've used the county. From what I've talked to with Bruce and with Justin, his, his, his main assistant, I don't know what his official title is, not a deputy, but they don't have any plans anywhere near in the future to be able to resume this for us. This is a big priority of mine, this is a big priority of the council, to get on top of our roads. Roads are, are one of the city's largest assets, and if we do not maintain our roads, they take very, like, like relatively speaking, they're really cheap to maintain if you stay on top of them. If you let them get to a certain point, then they get very, very, very expensive to replace, Airport Road being Exhibit A. And if you go to any of these Public Works conferences, UDOT conferences, where they train you and teach you about roads, the best thing you can do is keep your good roads good. That's where your first dollar should be spent, followed by keeping your less-good roads good and your worst roads good. It's the exact opposite of what you would think. It's not like credit card debt, where you pay off the highest interest. With road maintenance, you, you keep your good roads good, and then you, and then you work down the road, you work down the list, and that's where we're at with the Airport Road. So, Airport Road aside, we set aside more money this year for road maintenance than we have in years past. It's one of the things that, that I had really pushed for in working with, with our Public Works and with our budget, that we've just gotta get on top of it and stay on top of it. And, but we have a major challenge in that how we have been typically doing this is off the table. this is off the table. We have been looking for private companies to do it. This is one of those things, I don't know if you blame COVID, if you blame the supply chain, if you blame the labor force, you know, problems that we have, shortage of labor. You cannot get a company to come in and do this work for us. Sooner or later, we will get a company to come in and do this work for us. I'm not saying that'll never happen, but we fully expect that if we were to do the same amount of lineal miles for what we used to pay in the past 160, 150, 170,000, we'll probably be able to do less miles, and it would cost us more than the additional amount of money we budgeted. So, we have been spitballing. I have been working with Rob at Enix City, the city manager, Hayden, Public Works Director, and Kelly, and Kobe from our Public Works. We have been spitballing, coming up with some ideas. This was actually Hayden, the Public Works Director of Enix's idea. He said, "What we need to do is we need to buy our own equipment. We need to go in on it, because it doesn't make sense for a small city to do this by ourselves. But if we were to co-purchase this equipment, then each year, we would put our entire budget into material only." And by materials, you're talking about asphalt, actually, the oil, and you're talking about the chips. And we would use our own Public Works crew. We would help each other out. We would designate a certain time of the year. We would do so many days in Parowan, so many days in, in Enix City. We would have a memorandum of understanding to deal with the co-ownership of the equipment. And by doing this, we should actually be able to get ahead of the curve, instead of really being stuck with, "I don't know what options we have right now," because we just, we don't have any. Enix tried in earnest all year to hire somebody and could not. They were told no by everybody all year long to do chip sealing. If you wanted to go do brand-new asphalt, you'd probably find somebody. The current providers that do this are stretched really thin. So, our plan that we're proposing, now, this is within our budget, however, I'm only authorized to spend up to a certain amount. And then, the mayor and I together are authorized to spend a certain amount, and I think that's 25,000. Above that, it has to go to the council for authorization. What we are proposing is spending, I have the budget, here we go. Oh, it's on the laptop, let me move it over. We got a bid. Now, this is under state contract, so it's significant price decrease over what you would normally pay to buy a chip spreader. Normally, these are 425,000. Under state contract, we get a discount of 68,000. We would split 50/50 the cost of a $357,000 machine. So, if you do the math on that, we would spend of our, of our budget. I'm a finance guy, and I always use a calculator, because I never want to be wrong and look stupid. 178,000 this year of the 250 that we have allocated for road maintenance, the bulk of that would go towards the purchase of this machine. This machine is not the only thing you need to do this. You need an oil truck that, it looks like a semi-truck with a big tank. They're black, they're ugly. They have these booms, they spray. You actually rent that truck and the operator to operate it by the day. Even Cedar City that owns their own equipment, they still rent a truck and have them come in and spray. So, we would do that. And then, the only other equipment you need is rollers. We would plan on renting rollers for the first year, maybe in a future year, we would buy rollers. And, so, it wouldn't, it wouldn't use our entire budget this year, but it would use the bulk of it. The remaining part of the budget, we would buy material with, and then, next year, our new budget year starts in July, we would use some of next year's budget and the rest of this year's budget to buy materials, and we would be able to get building, or putting chips down on our roads next year. So, I think we've, we've figured out through the logistics of this. We will be trained on it, we'll have to get our guys trained. We may have to upgrade our dump trucks. Most of them, I think, would maybe work, but we may just have the, the chips actually delivered straight from, from Cedar City and not use our own dump trucks. But, we think with the logistics of it, with manpower, we can make this work. The county has committed to help train us if, if the initial training we get from the provider is not enough on running this machine. So, that's it. That's our proposal. More than a proposal to buy a piece of equipment, this is the best solution that we can come up with to start doing something with our roads. If you got a better idea, I would love to hear it. I don't know what it is, though.
So, in the MOU, it will address maintenance, it'll address if there's something that, one city breaks, maybe?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking about how things could potentially.
And we need to, we need to work through that MOU. We'll, we'll write it up, we'll have our legal review it, we'll bring the MOU to the council for approval. We need to essentially tell the provider that we want one of these, so they can get it on order, because these things take months until we get it. In order to be able to be doing roads next year, we at least need to tell them, yes, we want to order one. In the meantime, we can work out the details on the MOU. That's getting the cart in front of the horse just a little bit. However, I, I don't have any worries. Enix is very reasonable. As long as this doesn't benefit one over the other, we're both in the same need, the same boat. It's just gonna be a matter of who does what if something happens, and we would, we'll probably just propose a 50/50 cost share on anything. That's probably maybe a little lenient towards Enix, because they'll probably do a few more miles every year than we will. But, we frankly have more to gain, because we're smaller and we couldn't afford doing this on our own. I, I wouldn't come to you with a solution that we do this on our own. We, we don't have the manpower to do it on our own. So, we have more to gain from the sense that we kind of get that big brother help when it comes to manpower and some of those things. And they get more to gain because they get to do slightly more lineal miles for the same overhead costs. So, that's the, that's kind of the idea.
Has Enix voted on that yet?
They have not voted, but they, Rob has brought it to his council, and they're supportive and ready to go if we're ready to go.
Dan, am I wrong, but didn't, when we did it with the county, did we buy the chips from the county? Didn't the county provide the?
Um, I think we brought the, bought, I, I think in some years, if they had chips, we, we, I think, Kelly's gonna kill me, because I know he told me this. We bought them through their account as part of their total purchase.
Purchase, yeah.
Because you get a volume discount.
Right.
But, the, the county didn't supply the chips.
But, we piggybacked on to.
We did.
In order to get the bulk discount.
Yeah. And we would do the same with Enix. We would approach Western, or Sunrock, or, or whatever. I'm not even sure if one of the local gravel companies could, could make those chips. It's very, I'm sure they could. So, we would probably look to buy them together as well, if it would make sense.
Okay.
All right. So, if there aren't any additional questions from the council, I need a motion to approve the purchase of the chip spreader on state contract.
Just one other question, Dan.
Yeah.
You know how we borrowed money from one enterprise fund to buy a garbage truck and then paid, or paying ourselves?
Yeah.
Uh, would that be something, maybe not all of it, but that would, might give us more?
So, we have this in our budget. This is within our existing budget right now.
Yeah. You, you said that. What I was thinking is, we have 250,000 for road maintenance.
Yeah.
And we're gonna take 178,000 out to purchase the spreader. Could we borrow 50,000 from the electric, which would put it back into the?
The only thing I could see is, aren't we paying interest?
Yeah. We, when we do a, when we do a borrowing like that, we do have to pay interest.
Well, yeah, but it's.
To be legal.
Paying ourselves.
You know, I mean, we, we totally could. In, in this case, I think, given the timing of when we do road repair, it's gonna come, it comes right during when our budget season is ending and a new one is starting. So, my thinking is that, yeah, we'll only have 72, 71,5, 71,500 for materials, but we also have all of next year's budget, that we can also take some of that.
Okay. So, we have a little bit for this year, but then we get.
Yeah, we have.
Before we get into the bulk of the.
We haven't really spent any of this year's budget, or the last year's budget. We didn't do anything. Our plan was to use the county, and they said, "No." I, I would have to, I think the year before was the same thing. And so, anyways, I, I feel okay about, I mean, I, I was tempted to say, "Yeah, I'll just send an email to the council and say, 'Hey, this is what we're thinking. Is this supportive?" And I was like, "Oh, this actually has to go to the council." But, it's within budget, and it's not like, this doesn't allow us to put, to start working on roads literally calendar year 24, so.
Okay. I was just.
We could, you said, right?
Yeah. Yep. Yeah. We can, we can do as, we can actually do as much as we want in calendar year 24, because we have a combination of this year's budget and next year's budget.
Okay.
Now, we may decide we want to get ahead of something, you know, more than that, but, and, and, and to be fair, in, in some of the most recent years, us utilizing the county was actually not chip sealing. We had a lot of skim patching that we did, which is where they bring in asphalt and they use a grader to spread that and roll it. And, and that was needed to, to do a bunch of repair work. I don't, I don't remember how long it's been since we were doing some chip sealing, but if we don't get on top of it quickly, you want to get through all of the roads that you have within a certain timeframe each, each year. Kelly's texting me. I'm sure he's gonna tell me exactly the answer that I wanted. Thumbs up, he says. "We always applied materials, but they would give us the governmental rate."
So, we, could we possibly go in on that bulk buy with the county if, if we could get a governmental rate or a cheaper buy, or are we completely out with being able to work through even product?
We'll, we'll explore it. I bet it's the same rate.
Okay.
But, we'll explore it.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, that we approve the purchase of the chip spreader on state contract with Enix.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Hearing no opposition, the motion carries. We are now going to move out of action and back into work, and I would also be excusing our legal.
I'm gonna drive to Moab tonight for a chef's meeting.
No problem.
In the morning. Is that all right?
Mm-hmm.
Other than Jim, is it all right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, a motion to move.
You wanna come with me?
I didn't say you could leave.
Huh?
I didn't say you could leave. You sit right back down there.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
So, a motion to move out of action, back into our work meeting for item number 16. I don't think we need to do that.
Oh, we don't need to?
If we could just move right on. Okay. Well, good deal. So, item 16 is discussion of updates to Parowan City Code from the Water Board. This recommendation is regarding new source sizing requirements, the effect on water right exactions, and related changes. And this will be presented by Dan Jessen, and possibly supported by Councilman Sheriff, who also was part of that discussion.
So, this is just a work meeting, and we have a little bit of, little bit of time before this will come before you in ordinance form, because we need to do it concurrently with the update of the new water master plan and impact fee, results of the impact fee study, to adopt a new impact fee. But, we have, we did a proposal, we had Bowen Collins here, and, and they did a proposal of the water master plan, so I will not go into extreme detail, because this is something we've been talking about for some time. But, just as a quick background, due to a new state law that affects us due to our classification of city, at this time, we have until October of '23 to update our water code and policies to be compliant with a source sizing methodology for how we basically.
Do you want to change the code, maybe?
Um, no, actually, I'm, because, because this is just, I mean, I, I can, I can bring it up. It's not, it's, it's a whole bunch of text on a page. So, I'm just gonna explain as a discussion, you know, and I'm gonna summarize what it is. When it actually comes to the point where we're ready to adopt it, we'll have it out there, and people can read through it word by word and all of that. So, I just wanted to just talk through it real quick. We have to go to a source sizing model of water rights exactions. What that means is, right now, if you do a development in the city and you subdivide or an annexation, you have to bring the city water rights. And we have, our, our current code uses a formula. The rule of thumb is an acre foot per home. And, but, the, the actual water right exaction is the result of a formula. It's .45 acre foot for the indoor use, and it's four acre feet per irrigated acre on the outside. There's a whole different approach for commercial and industrial and so forth. We, we have been following the state's recommendations on that, the old recommendations. They've now moved to a source sizing where it's essentially, we have to do research and data on what our actual citizens use based on their meter size. And we're not able to demand from developers or people wanting to annex into the city any more than the, it's like a five-year average, and it's, there's a lot of data involved. We're not legally able, legally able to require more than that for development, starting in October of '23 for our classification of city. So, luckily, we've been working through our master plan of our water, and our engineer has done all of the calculations and the data. And we're now moving forward with a new methodology. Instead of going through this whole calculation, it will be based on what is called an ERC, or an equivalent residential connection. As defined, an equivalent residential connection will be a 3/4-inch meter. The amount of water that can be used by an average household, a single-family residential household with a 3/4-inch meter, is what the city defines as an ERC. Everything will be converted to ERCs. So, if you are a commercial business and you have a 2-inch meter, or even a resident that wants to use a 2-inch meter, that 2-inch meter will be converted into ERCs. If it's an apartment complex, we will calculate the number of ERCs that that apartment complex has, and each ERC will be required to deed to the city as a result of our calculations, a half acre foot. So, what that boils down to is whether you have a half-acre lot, or if you have a quarter-acre lot, or if you're in a PUD with a smaller lot, if you get a 3/4-inch meter, and it, that developer will have to bring a half an acre per ERC. So, that is the, essentially, the crux of what we're rolling out, and we are being forced to do this by state code. What we're not being forced to do, but what we need to do, is, is this, this kind of changes the foundation of, of a lot of things. Our impact fees, connection fees, water rights are just one portion when somebody goes to build a house, or to develop, or to split their lots. They also have to deal with connection fees and impact fees. And we needed a new methodology, since this is kind of the foundation underlying what we require when this happens. We looked at several different methods, and we decided that sometimes the simplest is the best, and in this case, the simplest is the most elegant. And, so, we are going to be going to a meter-based, a meter-size-based model for not only our water rights exactions, but also for our connection fees, which is currently the case, but also our impact fees. And this one takes a little bit of explaining. Why would an impact fee be related to the water meter size? And essentially, the way to think of this is, if I have a 2-inch pipe, I'm able to deliver X amount of water to my property, versus if I have a 3/4-inch pipe, I can deliver X. I can deliver X amount of water less than a two-inch pipe. And we have to build our system, um, as we- as we drill wells, as we do other sources of water, hence source sizing, and as we put in the, um, the transmission lines, and as we put in our water tanks. They're all based on what our city is capable of drawing from that system, and from a fairness standpoint, the size of meter you get is your impact on the system. So it's- and this can be calculated right down to the gallon, and we're- we're using some, um, American Water Works Association. We're using their numbers, which are very well vetted, and if anything, they're a bit conservative in favor of the customer. We will base our percentage increases of connection fee, impact fee, and water right dedication on the relative percentage increase that that size of meter is able to deliver to the customer. Um, a lot of large cities also use a meter-size-based way to do it. Makes it really simple, makes it easy for developers to understand. For the average homeowner that wants to split their lot, they can- they can look right at it and say, "Okay, this makes sense, and this is how much I have to pay if I want a large meter, or if I'm going to develop and I need thirty houses that use a three-quarter inch meter," we can say, "Boom, boom, 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 here's what it is." It's not some formula, we're not getting engineering involved, um, which is now the case on some of these more complex situations. Um, two things to mention, we have talked about, um, right now, our code is- is- it's pretty good. One of the effects of it is, it does restrict growth to the actual number of water rights that are in the aquifer, and we restrict it by priority date. Um, I won't go into that in- in super detail, other than that is a really, really good idea. And, um, props to the city and everybody that was involved in that and- and put that into place, um, before I came. Um, however, um, there's been a couple of, of, I guess, administrative challenges with our current code. It's very, 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 very rigid. Um, for example, um, if we don't make a small carve-out, it would make it administratively, um, burdensome, not only on us, but also on the property owner. If you want to build a house and you want to upgrade from a three-quarter inch meter, which will now be the default, to a one-inch meter, if we don't make a small carve-out, it essentially would force a person who wants to build a house to go out on the market and to buy a fraction of a water right, and to go through this onerous process with a division of water rights to deed it to the city and go through a protest period and all kinds of a hassle, not to mention, how do you go buy a fraction of a single water right and expect to get a half- get a decent, um, price on it? So, the- the proposal is that we make a carve-out for the upgrade from a three-quarter inch meter to a one-inch meter. Um, the impact would still be required to be borne by the, um, by the property owner who wants that additional upgrade. We just wouldn't make them have to go out on the market and buy water rights. The- the actual amount of difference in fees that we would collect would go into a dedicated fund that the city would buy water rights with. Um, we're already setting up a reserve account for that anyways, which we're going to take the, um, money that comes off the most punitive tier of water rate, um, water, um, system user fees that come in every month, we're going to put into this a reserve account. We would put any money that came in off this to that reserve account. The city can go out and buy water rights in bulk, and, um, we don't want to do that for developers. We don't want to do it for large subdivisions, but for a single homeowner that's building a house and wants to upgrade from a three-quarter inch to a one-inch, it seems very reasonable to have that- that exclusion. Um, the other exclusion that we discussed with Water Board was, um, for the single parcel owner who may own an acre and a half or an acre and wants to divide their lot into two lots to let their kids build a house. This, we would allow them to- to pay a water development fee rather than they go out on the market and buy a single half acre foot of water and bring to the city for their single division. The way it's written in all this text that we didn't put up, but you will see a copy of, is that they could only do this once in five years. We wouldn't want somebody to do a large subdivision every month, add a single additional lot, basically, but I have had this scenario come up where a longtime Parowan resident wants to divide a large lot that has everything else it needs, street frontage, it has everything, and let their kids build a house. And I- I recently told a lady who was- who was elderly, quite elderly, I- I went through and described this whole process, it took me fifteen minutes on how to go find a water right, a certain priority date, buy it, negotiate with a Realtor, and, you know, and- and take it to the water rights division, and I went on and on and on and on, and she's like, "I just want to be able to have my son build a house." And I was like, "I know, our code is black and white, this is what it says you have to do." So this was the other carve-out that the Water, um, Board considered and, um, what we're proposing. So, that's what's in here. Um, there's a few other, um, fail safes that would basically keep- make it so somebody can't game the system by buying a several number of smaller water meter connections rather than the one that they actually need for their- for their site, and so it requires a water meter per parcel if you're doing a development. Um, and there's a few other things like that that we're- we're working on. The language isn't- isn't totally finished, um, with the proposed language. Um, I need to adjust one sentence, there was a recommendation from, um, a member of the Water Board wanted to protect the city by adding a- a little bit of language, but what- what I handed out to you is pretty much the bulk of the adjustments to code. It doesn't adjust any of our land use code or any of our subdivision code, um, nor does it need to. Um, all it does is it affects code in chapter seven, which is our water, culinary water utility, um, where it goes into the detail of what needs to happen at application for water and, um, water assessments at the subdivision- at subdivision time. Our subdivision code is actually, doesn't need to be modified, um, in order to- to make this work. So, um, one of the reasons why I wanted to bring this in front of you for discussion at this time is by discussing it in city council, um, if we have a new development that comes in tomorrow, um, we can, um, essentially put them on pause while we work through this. We- we have an up to a six-month window to finish what we're- what we've started, and we can- we can then hold them to the new code that gets adopted. So I wanted to have it in an agenda so that we talked about it, and, um, and- and that's not some sort of strategic move for any particular developer or anything like that. Um, I actually really like this new, um, approach and the new methodology because the current methodology, um, it has- it can be very onerous and hard to understand and hard to implement, and, um, it's kind of a- an administrative pain. There's some things that it doesn't really address that we had to infer. I brought a few policy things to try to plug a few of those holes. This is pretty simple. Of course, I'm sure it's not perfect, we may have to tweak it a little bit, but more than anything, it's required by state law to adopt, and, um, so we'll get the final version as soon as we get the other finished, and we'll adopt it at the same time. So, questions?
Say the date it has to be adopted by?
Um, October. So, we've been- and by the way, we've been working with the state, um, they have to approve it, the vision of drinking water. They have to approve it, and, um, we've been going back and forth with them. We're fine, I'm not concerned about that at all. Um, they've had a few, um, tweaks to what we had, which has continued to delay us, but we are, um, we're at a good point now where they feel good with our numbers and our data and our approach and- and our language. We just now need to finish the water master plan and get it all adopted, so.
Councilman Sherliffe, did you have anything to add?
No, I think Dan did a- I thi- I think the biggest thing is that whereas before we- we simply said an acre foot, this is much more defensible, it's, as Dan said, it's all database, it's all right there. Uh, and the- the meter size really helps the city because the impact fees are tied to that. As Dan said, the meter size is the potential on our system at the max. And before, we've kind of subsidized where this is making the developer pay for what they're going to use on our system. So, uh, I think it's a- I think it's a good move.
Another elegant a- aspect to this is, we now really don't have to distinguish between single-family, multifamily and commercial because it's all based on amount of water you can get out of the pipe, as long-
Meter size, so that's-
Long as they engineer it right, and it- and say they don't, let's say they- they want to build a hotel, and they say, "An inch and a half meter is all we need." And we say, "Great, here's the water rights you got to bring, here's a connection fee, and- and here is, um, here's your bill." And then they get a- they get a couple of months in because they really didn't want to bring us more impact fees and more water rights, and they realize it's not sufficient, and they now need to go to a two-inch meter. It's math. Okay, bring us the difference, we'll give you a two-inch meter. It's not- it's- it's really elegant, it's really simple, and we don't have to have a really complex code or policies in- in order to- And that's good for our citizens to understand what they have to do if they want to, you know, do something with this.
All right, is there any other discussion on this agenda item? All right, thank you. Um, moving now to item number seventeen, reports, updates, old business follow-up by the elected officials and staff, and we'll start with the side. You ready to go? Are you ready?
Oh, yes, I would be first. I'm not used to being first. So, yes, so we had a theater board meeting, I think it was last week. Um, they're really excited about a play that Mackenzie Nims is going to be directing, and I'm super excited because she's my daughter's age and she went to school with my daughter. And it's really, I don't know, kind of surreal that she's even been old enough to be in this position, to be able to do that, but she's just so mature and just such a great young lady, and it's going to be great. Um, so that meeting went really well. And then the Parowan Interact Club, which is, um, worked through with Jennifer Terry, they are putting on the Nightmare Theater. I'm sure you guys maybe have seen some of these posters around. Anyway, I love Nightmare Before Christmas, so I really love this poster. Anyway, it opens up tonight, which we're all having so much fun here, we're not going to be able to make it because it's from five to nine. Well, maybe we will. But it goes until October thirty-first, and then, so they'll do it every night except for on Sundays. And it is two dollars if you bring a can of food with you, or you can just pay five dollars. And then all of the proceeds, so all the money and the food that is donated, um, will be donated to the sub presenna here in Parowan. And they neglected to put that on the flyer, which they realized after they were all printed, that that didn't get done, but, yeah. But it should be super fun. And then my last thing is, everybody should have received a flyer in the mail on the wrap tax. Ta-da. I think it had a lot of great information, but there are still people with, um, questions, which is great. So I invite anybody in the public that has questions, you can contact me. I'm sure you can contact any member of the council, they have information as well. Um, it's something that I feel personally that is needed for Parowan. And I'm just glad that the information's out and people are talking about it. If it's positive or negative, it still has people talking about it, so, that's all we have.
Did we get any estimates on that, or is that- is it- did you ever get that information from the county?
So I've emailed the county, but I have not gotten any estimates back, but hopefully by the next, uh, council meeting, I'll be able to report on that. Like, what I asked the county is to just, I wanted kind of like a rough estimate of how much revenue we could have brought in last year, like for January to December, and then what we could have done for this year. And those are some numbers that I'm trying to get from them, just to see, like, potentially how much money, um, could have been collected had we had it in place, just to kind of give us all like a perspective of- of what we could be getting to help with, um, our recreation, our arts and parks program. So, I'll report on that as soon as I have that.
Right, thank you. Okay, so moving now to Councilmember Downey.
I have nothing to report. Uh, Dan, you're going to talk about the library, won't you, and update?
Yep, I wouldn't- yep.
I didn't have any meetings at all, so.
Thank you.
Historical preservation meeting this week, uh, Powell came to us with a proposal to put some dogway stations, uh, around Parowan, around the parks, Lions Park, various places. Uh, but since that's on, uh, city property, it has to come to the city. But we did recommend approval, and it meets our- our criteria for dogway stations, I guess. But, uh, they- they got a grant that, uh, uh, bought them, so it- they'll be coming to the city with a- a more detailed plan of where they want to put them. That's all.
All right.
And- and somebody stole my little model, little- little green, little model. No, I'm joking. The- the mayor gave that to me, it's been one- it's been on my desk, but you're familiar with the little- little kiosk, little things that gives you a bag.
This is funny. When I've walked into your office and I've seen it sitting there, but somebody took it?
Well, no, they- they needed it for-
Oh.
For the historical preservation, what they looked like.
I got you, okay.
You've seen them, so.
So it's been used?
I want my- my model back, no, I'm joking.
You want your model back?
Is it- is it my turn?
It is.
Um, so, uh, library update, we- we had the, um, um, we had, of course, we've been working with mold mitigation, uh, thought we were done with that, and we did a final test just to make sure that it didn't pick up any mold spores in the air, and that we were good, and they could come in and remove all their equipment and move out. And they ran the test, and there were more mold spores in the air. Um, all of the rooms were good except for the one room, still had some. So, uh, Service Minister Pro came back in, and they did further investigation and found that there had some that they had- they had actually not seen in- in the past, so they were able to remove that as well, and they've scheduled at their cost another test. Um, I'm really glad we did the test because otherwise we wouldn't have known. And, um, of course, that's the only way that they would warranty their work is if we did a test at the ba- at the end of their work. And so, um, we were able to find a local company that was able to do it, uh, more reasonable than the first one that we spent. And so, um, just was, it's like you never like to have- you never like to find a problem, but you'd rather have found a problem and be able to fix it than a problem that you didn't know about, which rears its ugly head later, so. They went in and removed additional stuff and, uh, we're waiting on them to do the new test. They were going to do that, I think, today. It takes a while to go to the lab and back, we should know next week. Um, we are working to put, um, drywall, we're get- we're using city staff. Uh, we have our, um, um, part of our budget this year is, we had a seasonal employee that's typically worked in- in the parks in the- in the summer, and then not in the winter. Instead, this year, we hired a person to work part-time year-round and to work in the parks in the summer and to work on building maintenance in the winter. So, um, this individual plus another one of our public works is actually working on restoring the ceiling in the archive room. Uh, we need to get that ceiling fixed, that's kind of our top priority so that we can move everything out of- back into the archive room that's currently in the conference room. That's the reason why nobody can, uh, rent, um, um, what do you call it, check out the, um, the conference room. So, we're getting that done. Meanwhile, we're looking into, um, what we can do with the library, um, funding-wise for a- for a remodel. Uh, we did go out and we- we had a, uh, a local seasoned builder, um, come out and- and walk through the site. We're looking at some ideas. Um, we need to figure out exactly what we want to do on a remodel because we have to have what we want to do, so then we can figure out, um, we can get estimates on that, so then we can go and try to get, um, some funding for that. So if you have any- any ideas, um, here's looking at you, Kristin. If you have any ideas of things that would be, um, frugal but yet good upgrades, I mean, obviously, we need to do a roof. Obviously, we need to do the HVAC, it's on its last legs. We're going to want- We're gonna wanna upgrade, um, the piping, that's that old galvanized piping. We're gonna wanna upgrade to LED lights. There's, there's a couple of really obvious things. There may be some other, um, we may wanna take out a wall, take out, um, I, just the other day was mentioned to me, I was unaware, some of the glass in there, I guess all of the glass inside the library, none of it is tempered. So, when you got kids that make, could walk into a piece of glass in a commercial building like that, we have to have tempered glass. So, we'll wanna do, upgrade to tempered glass. We're probably gonna wanna upgrade a few things like that. So, we don't wanna, we don't wanna just go hog wild and now we have a two million dollar project on our hands, but we want to make sure that, um, if we can get some funding and we can do a remodel, that it'll, it'll buy us many years into the future. Um, we're looking for the old plans, the original plans for the library. Um, we've had those very recently and we believe them to be in this building. They were in the library for a while and Cory gave them here, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna find them. Callie and Judy and Heather and Stacy, you guys, we're gonna go on a treasure hunt and find those plans. They're probably in the basement. And that'll be very helpful when it comes to figuring out load-bearing walls and so forth and so on as we design roof upgrades and so forth. Anyways, that's the update on the library. Um, uh, pickleball site, we, we met with Todd, that's, that's old information, but, um, he's working on that. I went to the county commission meeting and basically, uh, I wanted to be collaborative, but tell them that we're gonna have to, um, kind of take their pretty, um, parking lot that they have all built that kinda goes into the city area and we're gonna have to modify it so that we can use that. We can't just go in and just, just slap in pickleball courts because the drainage won't work. So, we have to make sure that we basically take the road base off and redo the berm that's there, be careful for the water line, we need to go in and we need to, to take out a whole bunch of trash and junk. We need to grub the site, we need to remove the fence, tear down one of those old buildings. One of them's already torn itself down and sitting on the floor. Um, we need to do some site work and, um, and I, don't be surprised if you see some yellow equipment out there in the next couple of weeks to a month, doing some, doing some site work to get ready for some bidding to happen. Um, so, I did go to the county, I didn't ask for permission. I said, "We're gonna collaborate on this because it's our property, but we wanna work together" and, um, they're definitely supportive and, and will, will wanna work with us there. So, that was a good conversation with them. And, um, the, um, we have started work on prepping for the bike park. Um, first thing to say, which is important, which is a little bit of a deviation from what we talked about in the past, is we actually started scaling the bike park to the correct scale. It's not gonna take up half of that property, it's gonna take up pretty much the whole space that we designated. Um, it was actually scaled wrong on one of the preliminary things that we were looking at. If you were to build something similar to what they have in the, the park that we've kind of referred to a lot in Ivans, um, even without the, the X Games, BMX, whatever site, just their regular site that they have, it would use up pretty much the bulk of this property. So, um, we've had some, we've had a, um, a preliminary meeting and we're looking into, um, acquiring materials. We, we've started grubbing the site and getting ready and so, uh, it's moving forward great. Um, it's nice when you have some dedicated employees that are real passionate about it and we're working on that as well. Um, airport, we're getting real close to the line, um, but if you drive out there, you'll see they are, they are putting asphalt down every day. Um, one of the frustrations that all of the administrative red tape, where that got us was we are now just pushing the limit on, um, getting it done by November first, which we're supposed to by contract. And the cold weather, of course, is, is concerning. We can only lay asphalt under certain conditions. And, um, in, in, lest anybody is concerned, th- they have two separate inspectors from two different entities that literally are there on-site, right behind the asphalt machine, checking temps, tech, checking temperatures on the, on the inlet side, on, right as the, as the asphalt is laid by the laying machine. Um, they came in with all of their original testing, in fact, it cost them about a week and a half because we, there was an issue with that, it wasn't coming in at exactly a hundred percent on its, on its compaction on the seams and so they made them tear it all out, that cost us a week and a half. But they don't mess around. Um, one good thing about the federal government's red tape and bureaucracy is they, they essentially ensure that we get a good runway put down. So, um, I still feel like we're, we're gonna make it, we're gonna get our runway back up and running before the winter season. Um, and Sunrock is, last I heard, they were gonna have two crews out there, um, two full, full crews of machinery and everything to get finished. And so, I think we're still, um, we're on target there. There's a million things going on, but I think those are the big ones.
I just wanted to add a few things. Um, the bike park is exciting. Uh, it's been, like as Dan said, the dirt work has started and we've started talking to some local suppliers about providing us with the product that we'll need to build that and to do the, what we're calling the cap, which is the, is the smooth surface and I think we'll be able to do that with local people. And I really love being able to get those products from the people that are here in town and they're excited to be part of that. Um, also, we started talking to BLM about helping with some, uh, fencing for that and they won't be able to because different from the one we did to Trailhead for Valentine Peak, this is just strictly a city project. However, they are interested in continuing conversation because as we move forward toward the Dry Canyon Pond, um, there's a trail design around that as well and this potentially could be where people could start, park, come up, um, you know, come up the, the existing trail system. So, there are aspects of that design. Um, they're all part of our master active transportation plan, so we will have that documentation to support that at the time that we start looking at those connection pieces. This is a long-term project. I've, I did receive a lot of feedback, um, finally. We had a, a week addition time added on if anyone had any additional feedback and I did get a few more pieces of feedback on that plan. And, um, one of the people that, um, replied said, "Well, this looks really expensive and how much money is it gonna cost?" and all of those things. Really, the goal of this plan is for us to have a master active transportation plan as part of our master, or general plan. And so, you know, the goals are gonna be prioritized, one of them being safe, um, safe schools for Maple Springs and Stillwater, you know, obviously that would be one of the first ones. Um, you know, getting the, the stretch of, of sidewalk around the park, um, Lions Park, getting the stretch of sidewalk from the sports complex to the high school, so that, that's safe as well. But every aspect of these kinds of plans, they need to be documented, they need to be part of what the city has adopted. And so, they can always be adjusted, it doesn't mean we're going out and spending money. It just gives, gives us the foundational documentation to bring a mature application when we do find money available for these kinds of projects because now we have, uh, certified plans for these things and Bike Utah is really where, is who we need to be getting them from. They're very, very well-known and, and very well-respected. So, it's an exciting time to have that being wrapped up. We still have probably another month or so before we'll hear from them with an update. Um, Old Rock Church, we had a meeting today with the engineers and we went through that project pretty much beginning to end, floor by floor. And we've got some great direction on that now with what we can start and what we can contin- continue to pursue as phase one. Um, I'll just give a shout-out to Judy and to Karen Miller and to Ava Chamberlain who finalized all of the proofing on the brick orders so that we were able to get that, um, finalized. And that was a lot of work, but we also along the way know that we'll have an easier time on a phase two because we will continue to do this fundraiser. Uh, we'll open it up again, um, sometime in the near future, but those bricks were, were accounted for, paid for and ordered. And so, um, that being said, it looks like we're gonna be able to, yes?
One more item, so, and I don't want to, um, bring up a painful memory, but it is important for the public to understand, um, in the last meeting, we had a voting conundrum with Robert's rules and we had talked about what the, wh- whether the city had, and I, and I apologize because I didn't have my laptop and I couldn't research it, um, but the next day it was researched and we already have, we already have code that says, that, that's the answer to that, should that ever come up in the future. If we have, actually regardless of abstentions, essentially what the code says is you need three votes-
Yes.
-to take any action by the city council. Um, three affirmative votes. Um, there are some, um, entities, county, states, whatever, that have said that once you have a coram present, it takes a simple majority to pass anything. The reason why they do that, and, um, Scott had to leave, but, um, I actually was, was thinking maybe Scott could, um, he could, he could tell us what his thoughts are on it and we could decide to change it if we wanted to, if you like his argument or not. His argument is that is a good thing if you have a simple majority, once you have a coram present. And I'm like, "Why? The, the council is three, I mean, do you really want the, the city taking action on anything less than three votes?" That's kinda my position. And he says, "Otherwise, if you, if you, if you just have a simple majority," um, the advantage of that is, is that a, a non-vote, an abstention, is truly a non-vote. When you have the code that we have that requires three votes, it allows an abstention to be a, kind of a, a no vote. Because if you know that there's not enough positive votes, you're able to abstain and you, you haven't voted, but it, it makes it harder to pass something. So, his, his argument is a simple majority allows an abstention to truly be a non-vote and the, and the will of the remaining council to still be done. So, that's a, that's a, I guess it's just whether we would like, you know, I guess we could hear Scott's argument on that or not. But we do have it solved, we didn't figure it out that night, for that, I apologize. But right now, our code says it's three, um, uh, positive votes, um, affirmative votes in order to make any action happen. And if we don't ever change that, that's the way it'll always stay. We don't even have to go back and do anything that was done because we ended up having three votes in that meeting. Uh, so, just, just I guess to answer the question, in case the public is like, you know, "Why aren't you gonna fix that?" We don't need to fix it because it's already there. So, that was just a, a side note that I wanted to bring up.
Alright.
Is there anything else in that meeting that needs to be brought up?
You're looking at me.
Yeah.
I don't have anything that I wanna bring up.
Alright.
That says a lot.
And with that?
I do have something I'd like to bring up. I just got a text that asked if I was gonna bring up whether there was an illegal meeting in the hall. I didn't know that that was gonna be expected of me to, to adjust, to address that. So, I'm being put on the spot.
Well, Dan-
And I will, I'll tell ya. Go ahead.
No, you're-
We had a discussion, we went out in the hall, I was given instructions. I don't have a comment as to whether there was a, whether there was an illegal meeting or not. I don't. I was, I was told that we needed to change the committee. It put me in a really tight spot. So, I approached Councilman Burton and said, "The, the, the three would like you to not be on the committee." And he said, "I don't like that." And I said, "I, I don't either because we just talked about it, but I wanna move forward with this thing, that's what we need to do." And, and, and I said, "If you wanna bring it back for a vote or if you wanna voluntarily step off, that's fine." Originally, he said, "I'll, I'll voluntarily step off." He then said later, "I don't like this." And I said, "I don't wanna get between the commission, between the council on this, I don't." So, I'm not gonna make a judgment call as to whether there was an illegal meeting in the hall. I was directed immediately after the meeting to change something that had been decided in the meeting. I don't care whether there was an illegal meeting, I don't know what did, what defines an illegal meeting. Is it five seconds, is it zero seconds, is it within the thing, is it the spirit of the law? I feel like I'm being put on the spot to defend whether there was an illegal meeting and I'm saying, "I don't care, one way or the other." I think everybody could make that own decision as to whether there was or there wasn't. But the result of it is, is, is you put your city manager in a tricky spot.
And that is not, that's not the purpose. The integrity of three members of this council was impugned. I personally was called something. Both, the mayor, I mean, the city coun- excuse me, the city manager and the lawyer viewed the security tapes. Is that not correct?
That's not correct.
No, please, Chief, dead.
The lawyer has not seen it.
No, the-
Well, when I talked to him, no, when I talked to, okay, my information was incorrect. What I'm saying is-
Even if there, like-
What I, what I'm saying is-
People can talk and you can figure stuff out and whether, if there's a meeting or not a meeting, I don't, I actually don't put a lot of, I don't even worry that much about it.
I don't either, but to be called a liar in council, that, that needs to be addressed.
Well, and I'm not defending, because I, I really don't wanna get in between-
No, I know, but Dan, that meeting was a disaster all the way around.
I agree, that meeting was a disaster.
I'm, I'm gonna jump in here. Um, so, to me, there isn't a question of if there was a meeting in a hall, in the hall, how many feet apart you were, where somebody was located. The dr- the issue I have is that after a decision was made outside of a public meeting, a subordinate was then given direction to act-
No.
With, with direction given by three council members, without council with the other two council members.
What happened, Mayor, is we approved the initial committee and then public statements were made that made it seem that there was not impartiality.
Public statements after the approval?
After he was, after we originally called for volunteers. We were fine, it was fine-
So, where did the public statements come from? Within the time the meeting left and the direction was-
No, no, no. The meeting was held at the, the candidate's forum. That was, there were statements made that changed my view as to the impartiality of one of the committee members.
Well, you were there at meet the candidates that night, you know what statements were made. But my issue is the violation of the Open Public Meetings Act is that we had an open public meeting where a decision was made and then, then within a very short time period, probably less than an hour, another's decision was made outside of an open public meeting and then a subordinate was given direction about the decision that had been made for an action in an open public meeting to be changed.
Mayor, may I say something? Um, please remember that the committee was formed in the first meeting in September. The, the controversy occurred in the first meeting of October, so there was a month in between.
Yes, but I was directed to do something ten minutes after the meeting ended.
In October.
Of the meeting that the committee was set apart, I was told to do something ten minutes after the meeting. Different. I don't, and like I said, I don't care, this is not a, this is an ad hoc committee. There wasn't even a vote taken, it was a, it was a, it was a committee.
Then why was it brought up the last time for a vote?
I didn't bring it up. Oh, why was it brought up? Because we agreed what we were doing here and I was directed to remove a city council member, one of my bosses, from a committee. Now, what am I supposed to say to that person? You, guess what? I decided of my own accord that you're not gonna be on this committee. I can't say that. I can say, "I was directed to tell you that they would rather you not be on the committee because of some things that you said." And Dave said, "Yeah, I understand because I have said some things." So, but then the more he thought about it, he thought, "That's not right that, that they tell him that." So, he wanted me to get back in the middle of it and go back to you guys and I said, "I refuse to be the middle man in refereeing an argument amongst a deliberative body." I said, "Mayor, put it back on the agenda, if they wanna fight about it, let them fight about it, let them make a motion and a vote because that's how this body makes decisions."
Exactly, and yet, we made a decision that was over- And yet, we made a decision that was overturned by both the attorney and the city manager.
No.
Yes, you said...
The decision was overturned in the hall, however...
No, 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 no.
Well, okay...
The decision about who was gonna be on the committee was overturned, and I was directed.
It's just that the Open Public Meetings Act is critical transparency, and, and the...
Now, now, whoa, whoa, whoa. Whoa. Bring the video from the hallway, show it in a public meeting, to see if, in fact, there was an illegal meeting.
I'm, you know what? I would actually, I would really like to do that, because then, the public can decide for themselves. I don't, I, I don't care, I don't want to be in the middle of this.
I want to work together, but there is no working together.
And, I mean, the other part is, it was just talking about bringing people together to talk about a step in grade. That was all this was, this committee was, was...
Exactly. And yet, the, and we were, we were fine up to then. It was the comments that were made in public...
But, not in that meeting.
No.
I was put in a position that we left here with a decision, and then, I was given a task to take a city council member off a committee.
No.
The other, the other...
And what am I supposed to do? And what I said to you guys was, this puts, not to you, to Sharon and Matt. And I said, "I don't expect this to go well. Dave is not gonna want to come off this committee."
You did say that, yeah.
And I said, "What's gonna happen is," and I said, "I, I, at the end of the day, the majority of the council is gonna take action on what this committee does. So, the majority of the council needs to figure it out, and I'm fine with that. So, therefore, if Dave agrees to voluntarily come off an ad hoc committee, I'm fine doing this, without bringing it back to the council for a vote."
It's done, he is on the committee.
I know, that's why I was fine doing it, without bringing it back to the council for a vote. But, when Dave says, "I'm not okay with this," which is what he said a week later, week and a half later, I said, "Now, I'm in an impossible position." And I said, "Therefore, it needs to be resolved by the majority of the council, so it needs to be where the council can even take any action, which is in this room by vote." You might think that that was some sort of a setup, it wasn't. I tried to do everything I could in that meeting to avoid the circus blow-up that happened. And once it blew up, I tried to gather it back in. I tried to say, "Let's just leave the council out of it, and we'll have the administrative do stuff and bring back some options." And, this is too, and I use the word "personal," because I didn't want to use the word "emotional", this is too personal, and I can see that it's personal. But, at the end of the day, the way we get things done by a deliberative legislative body is by voting and by using Robert's Rules. And that's where this thing had to play out, since there was a disagreement by the council, who are my boss, collectively.
I don't, don't even care how it transpired, what I care about is a decision that was opposite of the decision that was made in an open public meeting, was made and then a, and then, a direction was given, without the knowledge of anyone but through the council.
That is not, show the, show the...
I don't care about the tape, I care about the direction that was given. That direction was given to just, to change that committee after the decision was made to...
So, we're not on an agenda item, so we can't take action, but, but I think that if, if the council would like me to, we'll put the video out on, on the website or on social media.
And the other, the other part of it is, again, you had already said you had a conflict, and you had abstained, but then, you basically led that agenda item.
No.
It's okay to, to sit back and, and let...
I did, and then, I was told that in violation of everything that I have been taught, in six years on the council, of three votes required to pass anything. That, I could, I didn't have my ordinance here, Dan didn't have his, and Scott didn't have his. But, in six years on the council, I have always, every Utah League of Cities and Towns, every single training, in a five or six-member council, three affirmative votes are required.
I understand what you're saying, but after you said you had a conflict, and after you had abstained, you led that agenda item. The vote thing happened at the end of that. And so, the point is, is in council meetings, which I study...
Because I abstained does not mean that I do not have the right to discuss.
No, but if there's a conflict and an abstention, generally, the council member is then quiet. And in some cases, if they're not able to be, they leave the room, if they really can't be objected.
That is...
But, the, the meeting being led by you, that agenda item being led by you, was also really, for me, I'm like, but...
Why then, didn't you take charge?
Because at that point, I was as...
You are the mayor.
...and a back as I think everyone else, and I...
You are the mayor.
You're right, and I'm learning and, and working hard at it every day, just as each of us are in our roles. But, at that moment, so, putting that all aside, no matter if it was, however the decision was made, and it was even said in the meeting that a decision was made, we just weren't exactly together. But, a decision was made by three council members, outside of an open public meeting, and then, direction was given to change a decision that was made in a council meeting.
No, we did not meet together. We discussed. Are you telling me that you do not discuss city matters privately with one or two individuals?
I do, but never with three at a time. And, and whether three council members made a decision...
Show, show the, show the tape.
Regardless of how you made the decision, you made a decision and you changed a decision that was made in an open public meeting.
Based on new information.
Everyone was at Meet the Candidates, there wasn't anybody that wasn't there. That wasn't new information. That was at Meet the Candidates, which each one of you were there. You heard it directly at that meeting, that wasn't new information. And again...
It came after, okay.
A step in grade discussion, it was just a, a policy discussion, and that would push us from a ten o'clock meeting to a four-thirty meeting, potentially having to pay overtime for those involved. So, there were a lot of things about that. It, it would make more sense to bring it back to a council agenda, and have had that discussion in an open public meeting.
So, this is the tape, just immediately after the meeting, from inside the council chambers. Right here, Jim tells me, "We've gotta talk out in the hallway after this meeting." And I said, "Okay, cool. Happy to do it." I'm not gonna, I'm not trying to color anything, I just want everybody to understand.
I didn't see how much time elapsed, but it was then that you went in the hall and were given the direction.
I haven't been given the direction. I'm just, I haven't even gone into the hall yet.
Do you have the hallway shot?
Yep, we'll watch that next. So, so then, I walk out into the hall, twenty-two hour, three minute, and roughly ten seconds. Actually, come back into the room at twenty-two seven. We don't have a camera in the bathroom, in case anybody was wondering. We do have a camera in the hallway that's right next to this, in case anybody wants to see it. And it, might as well show it as well, so. Apologize for being long-winded with Scott.
I'm being long-winded there, too.
I would skip through this, but I don't want anybody to wonder if anything happened Here I finally come. Our discussion happens just off-camera, but I'll show you the other camera. I'm not gonna show the whole tape of that camera, 'cause, I will. In fact, so, just, just from a timing standpoint, I mean, I'm not here long, but I'm just talking to Matt and Sharon. Three fifty... Three fifty-three is the time, and I'll indicate when different people come and go. There's Jim in doorway. There's Dave Burton. Stacy, please don't. I'm just asking. I'm not trying to paint it one way, I don't want anybody else to paint it anyway. I just want the record to show what it is, that's the only reason I want to show this. No, you're alleging something. So, now, the meeting is over, and we're walking back in, that's when I go back in, where you guys see me come back in, right? This is just, of course, so we, I'm gonna skip ahead to the point where Jim and, and Jim is not there, but Matt and I are there with Sharon, talking. So, this is while they're waiting, Jim went into the bathroom.
Can you go back to where Councilwoman Topham comes out of the council chambers?
I left right after David Burton.
Huh?
I left right after David Burton.
So...
Can you go back to where the three of them were standing in a triangle in the doorway?
I'd really rather not. I'd really rather just put it out on, on the thing and let people decide what they want. It's gray area, again, what's official, what isn't, even if there was something, what does that mean? It's not like there's a, it's just, this is an ad hoc committee, this is politically charged, emotions are really high, and I understand them, and I don't discount that.
Right.
I've just tried to, tried to move the business of the city ahead without, without trying to take sides.
And I understand that. My only point is, our integrity was slandered, I personally was attacked, that, the statement was made, I saw with my own eyes...
I did say that. Do you want an apology?
Yes.
You do?
If you, I'm not asking for one, but if you would, if you want to give me one, I will...
Because, yes, I did say that, and then, after, when I was watching, I was like, "Yeah, I didn't actually see them with my own eyes, but I knew you were out there." But, yes, I did not see you with my own eyes, but I knew that you were out there. I did say that. And so, I apologize for my misspoken, for misspoken.
Thank you. I, I appreciate...
But, I will not apologize for standing up for what is right.
And neither will I.
Okay.
Neither will I, and we can agree on that.
Okay. And we have video of the three of you meeting in the hall, and then, direction was given to a subordinate, to change a decision that was made in an open public meeting.
A meeting? Is that any different than...
Could we take out the meeting part, but even say, "A direction was given to a subordinate that changed a decision that was made in an open public meeting?"
So, you're saying that we can't review decisions made?
You can't give direction to a subordinate that changes a decision that was made in an open public meeting?
No. Uh, who is a subordinate?
Dan.
No, Dan is an employee of the city.
Who is his management?
You.
Who else?
No, we are the legislative body. You are the chief executive. Dan...
So, so here's the problem with that. I tell you guys to go to heck when you tell me that?
No.
No, I take direction from the council.
But, in the final analysis, unless it's an ordinance or a resolution...
Right.
You have much more leeway...
So, here's the thing, I actually agree with both things that are being said right now. I agree with the fact that this was not a legislative decision, but it was direction to...
but it was direction to change what had just been discussed in the meeting. Now, it doesn't rise to the level of an official meeting, we, I call this meeting to order, all that- So we, because it's like an ad hoc committee, this can't happen, and I'm like, okay, and I, and that's why I was comfortable with the fact that, I wasn't comfortable with the, with the, with the result. Like, if there had been a vote taken, and then I was directed the opposite of that vote, it would be clearly stepping over the line.
Exactly.
But, what it, it was the spirit of it was the same thing. And that's why I was like, I, okay, I'm fine with this. Actually, my objection in the hallway was not that, that I'm being directed contra-, I mean, that this is an illegal meeting. In fact, I made a joke to you, we can't have three people, I said that, and Jim, and you said, no, I'm, I'm leaving, and you walked out, right? But I said, my objection was, was actually the fact that by removing Dave from this thing, you're gonna get Dave really upset, and this is gonna potentially blow up later. And I said, I don't wanna drag the employees through this political disagreement. Now, having said all of that, when Dave says, no, I don't wanna come off, I'm in an impossible situation. And I presented that impossible situation as a possibility. If Dave doesn't wanna come off, I don't wanna get in the middle of this. I will ask him if he wants to come off. And if he doesn't wanna come off, then at that point, it needs to be an official legislative act with votes and everything.
Because, can I just interject just a little-
Yeah.
-more, is because then I, when I was asked to be on it, I said, okay, is David okay with it? I, apparently there was a miscommunication, because then I got accused from him, from blindsiding him, and taking over his position, which I did not. I didn't even wanna be put in the middle. And the only reason that I chose not to be on the committee is because I would have to do it after hours, which would require other city employees to have to stay after hours. That is, the only reason I didn't wanna be on it, not that I didn't have the time or the energy, or things that I'm being accused of, why I didn't wanna be on it, is not even the case. It was the case of, I didn't, I would have to be here at four-thirty because of my current job.
Mhm.
And that is the only reason I didn't wanna be on it. But when he is, you guys know how he can be, it's like, I don't like to be accused of blindsiding somebody, 'cause I don't have time to blindside people, like, I don't think like that.
And my other point, and it's been brought up multiple times, it got brought up again tonight, is the mayor can meet with anybody the mayor wants to.
Absolutely.
I've invited you to open Friday meetings, I've invited Sharon to put a desk in my office, you can meet with me anytime. You always infer that it's a secret thing or something, if I meet with someone.
No.
I can meet with two council people.
Absolutely.
I was accused of in writing, meeting with two council people was a problem. I can meet with two council people, but the three council members cannot meet together, cannot.
That's absolutely true.
And so that's a quorum, and that's not allowed. And so my, there's accusation-
Does that constitute a meeting?
Standing together, talking in the hall, I think so. I mean, we're not supposed to, I mean, we all know that. But even the, you have secret meetings, you can have a secret meeting with me anytime. Come and talk to me, it's never a secret meeting.
No, no, no.
But in the hallway with three council members, making a decision and directing someone to their decision is not allowable.
We- No, we- We talked one-on-one, and then two went. We made, did you see Matt go two? Stuck up his hand. What I'm saying is, let's move on. Okay? Rochelle, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I apologize to you and to the mayor and to the city for me getting too loud. Dan, I apologize to you for putting you in this situation.
Okay.
I think we need to make sure that we're doing what is best for the city.
I agree with that.
Then let's, let's move on. It's over.
And we need training on open public meetings, because even the accusation of me doing things in secret if I meet with a council person, I will happily meet with anyone, anytime.
No, but I, I like what Jim is saying, let's move on, and you're absolutely correct, we have to do it by law once a year. So I make a unofficial motion, 'cause I don't make motions, and the meeting is as good as over, but we need to have Scott, let's break him in as our attorney, and have him do a training on it.
And just in response to, I'm the mayor and I should know, I, I had both attorneys tell me, they've never seen anything like the kinds of things that have happened here in very long careers. So how would I, at two years in, know how to handle something that legal counsel hasn't ever seen in very long careers?
No, but, but, there are some simple, basic rules of running a meeting.
Yeah.
You are, this is your meeting.
We always follow them. Even the appearance of.
That gavel, when things get out of hand, bang the gavel, eight charge.
And I should have banged it when you led the section about the thing that you said you had a conflict with. I mean, we do need to do better, I agree we need training.
But it's important to understand, too, that just because a person declares a conflict does not prevent them from discussing or even voting. You cannot deny a legislative person the ability to vote. He can declare a conflict, he can recuse himself, he can vote yea or nay. You cannot prevent a duly-elected representative from voting.
And I agree with that, however, I think that if you make a motion, you're positively making a motion to do something, I don't think you can then vote against the motion to do it.
Oh, you absolutely can.
I've read the opposite.
Hey, I'm gonna bang my gavel, because we've all agreed that we need additional training. And I'm going to make, ask for a motion to move from this public meeting into closed session. Um, we will be discussing, if I can find my little sheet. The character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual, collective bargaining, pending, or reasonably imminent litigation, the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, including any form of a water right or water share, the sale of real property, including any form of water rights or water shares, deployment of security personnel, the bu- Which I, I have no idea, I just told, was told we needed professionals.
Thank you for coming out.
No. Purchase, purchase or sale of property.
Okay. Strike that, it's the purchase or sale of real property. I wasn't told what we were going into close for. I wanted to be sure I covered our bases.
Oh, I made a motion. Oh, did you, you made a motion already, didn't you?
No, you can make the motion, no second.
I don't have anything to read.
I'll make a motion to move into closed session for-
Real property.
Real property.
I second that.
All those in favor, by roll call.
Rochelle Toppam, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
Matt Gill, aye. Jim Scherl, aye.
Dan.
I got my sweater. I just said, we're really worried, could you give us that day? I just hope it works. To my mind. But I just-
I'll take a poll. I, I know that it is, like I said, I don't discount anybody's emotion about it whatsoever. We're good, we're good.
Sure?
Yes.
Cause I don't need to be a peacekeeper in the safety.
We don't need a peacekeeper. You've seen the worst, you've seen the worst, we're gonna- Let's all just wave to the camera, 'cause someday you never know. And then I, now I know I need to lose some weight. Right?
Okay, well, it's called broken arrow, you need to-
Okay.